Yeah. I had, and I'll keep it short, is the association. There are committees, but if I have that, there's also other committees that we've done that are SCA. So if there's any committees that you currently sit on that you don't think you'll continue on, I don't remember exactly who's on what, but just start thinking about that for, we're getting toward the end of the year. But there is capacity that you have all to sit on our committee. That's helpful too, because you're really well represented. We're going to be involved with those committees. I have a couple. The pick committee for SCA, which is a public issues committee, I am on the joint recreation committee. And then one of the flood ones too, and I'll at least probably continue on the flood. And I could probably continue on the pick as well next year, but just something to start thinking about, and if you are not someone I'm talking about, it's probably an email, and I can send it to you all too, for the list of things that'll be open. That's all I have. Anything else? All right. Review, regular meeting agenda. There's a couple of things on consensus. Pretty basic, but any concerns or use the regular meeting agenda tonight? All right. So are we, do we have our, are we ready to go on the first time? Okay. So we'll move on to our first discussion item, so it's a presentation of workload analysis reports. And I will, I'll turn it over to the city administrator if you want me to start. So tonight we have me, Annie, and I look like we did with your last name, Fadley and did I do all right?
It was super close, fatally.
We contracted with to do our workload analysis study. So if you recall, this project has been in the works. And Mary, you might have had it in the 2021 budget, uh, 2021, 22. It was put in the 23, 24 budget to be studied and needed to be completed as part of a trilogy of studies that council needed to do. Decision making around the budget, decision making around staffing. So we're coming up with Moss Adams and they're here to present their report. It was in the packet that was sent to council on Thursday. So we have the required point for their full reports then back in, and we'll go ahead and share slides as well when we're concluded.
Okay. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect.
And just so you know, we have the presentation from our screening. You want to just talk to me forward.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for having us this afternoon, evening. I'm Tammy Laura Schweitzer. I'm a director with Moss Adams, helping to lead this work alongside Annie. Annie, if we can go to the next slide. This is what we'll be covering with you briefly. We're going to take that a longer report and try to distill it down into about 10 minutes for you to be able to focus on some of the key takeaways. So we'll go over our project overview, the staffing level, analysis results, management considerations, and then next steps, which I know the city administrator has additional next steps that you might be sharing as well at the end of the presentation. And so as Cynthia had mentioned, the city had engaged Moss Adams to conduct an independent organizational assessment that really looked at workloads and staffing levels. It was designed to look at current staffing levels to determine whether existing staff capacity for work was really right sized in comparison to peer cities as well as industry best practices for the work that's being conducted at Duval. And then in addition to that, we also incorporated an analysis of anticipated staffing needs and community changes over the next three to five years to help you plan not only for the current, but also for the future. In this assessment, we evaluated all departments with the exception of the police department. As I'm sure your police chief will tell you, police departments have a very specific way of evaluating workloads. That is very different from how this analysis is performed for other departments. And so they were pulled out of this study for now. And I'll pass it over to Annie to talk through our methodology and results.
Perfect. Thank you, Tammy. So I'm just going to briefly touch on what our fact finding and analysis for this program. And this, this analysis was informed by. So we conducted interviews. We talked to 21 members of city leadership and management, really just aimed at gaining insights into the strengths, challenges, opportunities to improve organizational structure and staffing. We reviewed documents that staff were so kind to share with us, including org charts, job descriptions, and process documentation. We also distributed a confidential survey to all city employees who are in included departments, so not police. And we had a truly excellent 75% response rate to that survey. So that was fantastic. And then we conducted research into industry best practices for related topics, as well as conducting peer benchmarking with a list that we identified in partnership with city leadership. And you'll see that embedded throughout the presentation as we go through. So some high level responses included there. And we really just want to set the tone at the top with some commendations here. It was such a treat getting to talk to all of your employees. All city staff really were so kind to offer up their time, their resources, their insights. We really appreciated the level of engagement and dedication that they brought to this work. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And then also wanted to call out that we heard from employees a real perception throughout the city that it's just a positive, supportive, engaging place to work. And also put up here that there is a very impressive retention rate across the city overall, but especially in public works. Much lower to book turn, much lower turnover than we typically see. And the operations department division in particular has a remarkable 0% turnover rate over the last three years, which is really exceptional. So I wanted to put all that at the top, say thank you to everyone who contributed. It has been a delight. Okay. So the report is split into two sections. The first is staffing levels analysis. I'm going to take you through the sections and then we have time for questions at the end. So overall, we found that the city's staffing level is really not too far off base. It's relatively well aligned with peer cities and with industry standards. When you zoom in, there are some areas where understaffing or misaligned functions are causing some heavy workloads. And so those are the areas that we're going to walk you through today, and we broke it out by department. So the first department or office that we're going to cover is the city clerk's office. So this office is staffed in alignment with peer cities when you look at roles. So you can see here along the bottom, the results of the peer benchmarking at a high level. And while Duval does have a higher percentage of overall city staff in this office, that's really because of additional administrative roles that are housed here. And so ultimately, it's really standard to have a city clerk and a deputy city clerk among peers, and that's what Duval has. But here we heard that there is a pretty heavy workload. And so because it's not really due to your staffing, it's ultimately due to functions that are in this office that aren't really typically handled by a city clerk's office. And so there's much more in the report on this, but the top line functions here are asset management, facility rentals, things like procuring office supplies, contract management, things like that. And so our recommendation here is really that city leadership should just review those functions that this office is conducting and reassign where possible to support manageable workloads. Finance department. So understaffed compared to most, you start to get down in the peer benchmarking into the sixes and five percents here on the right hand side of these peers. And I really just want to call out that those are some bigger cities and that happens when you don't, you sort of hit the number of finance employees you need. So you don't need to scale finance necessarily as your organization continues to grow. So the real story here is that most peers, I think all except one, have six or seven experienced finance employees. So Duval has 4.2 and one of those is an intern. So the takeaway really is that finance is understaffed compared to peers by about one or two experienced FTEs, full-time employees. And the biggest difference that we saw there was really a mid-level management role. So it's common with peers to have a finance manager. The city has a director, but no mid-level management role. And so that really results in high workloads. It makes it difficult for this team to provide backup for key positions and maintain separation of duties. And so our recommendation is really just consider adding that mental management position. It could be a finance manager. It could be a senior accountant. But that would bring the city in alignment with peer structures and with peer staffing levels. So that is finance. Community development department. So there's a lot of variability with peers depending on what this office does. But generally, you can see you're not too out of whack here with peers on staffing. There are a little, some imbalances that come out when you look at workload metrics. So we saw when we looked at permit revenue per staff, that the city handles a higher volume than its peers do. And this is really contributing to a situation where the city is unable to deliver final decisions for permit applications on time on a pretty regular basis. And that's been okay up until recently because they've been able to request extensions from the applicant. But Washington state laws are changing to require jurisdictions to refund application fees when deadlines are missed. And so this is going to start to have a little bit of a budget impact. And with that in mind, our recommendation is fill the vacant positions in this department. Once you do that, really closely monitor the team's ability to consistently be responding to those permit applications on time. And then just keep in mind that you may need to adjust staffing or add external resources as necessary to just make sure you're regularly hitting those deadlines. Public Works Department. So this is the most solidly understaffed department in the city compared to peers. In Duval, it is 38% of your total staffing and the peer average is 49%. And you're also understaffed by volume metrics. So things like acres of park, the CIP budget, miles of sewer pipe, metrics like that. So we broke this out by team because you have teams doing wildly different things. So engineering is doing relatively well overall with current staffing levels. The issue here is really challenges completing planned and funded work with the staffing levels. So the recommendation for this team is if that's a priority for council, you can consider adding one or two additional project managers who can help bring that up. With wastewater sewer, understaffing is really most impacting the team's on-call schedule, which is not shared among enough people. And then it's also impacting the team's ability to conduct proactive wastewater management activities. So the recommendation here is to support staff getting the certifications that would allow them to join that on-call schedule. And then on the other side, consider adding additional capacity if, if you decide to, to support a proactive approach to maintenance. And a really similar story in operations, not staffed to conduct proactive maintenance. This team is also doing facilities management, which is something that we don't typically see and is something that we would recommend that you probably contract out. The public works supervisor and crew leads are doing a significant amount of administrative work. And so considering adding an administrative assistant to help out there. And then the last piece here is just that there is an upcoming citywide water meter replacement effort that is going to significantly impact workloads for this team. And it's something to have in mind that's coming up. Okay. So the last department or office before we move to the next section. So city administrator's office also understaffed compared to peers. Most peers do have an additional support role for the city administrator. So either a deputy city administrator or a role like a management analyst. You just have a city administrator and this person is pulled in a lot of directions, handling a majority of HR work at the city, contract management, many other tasks. And so our recommendation here, consider adding a deputy city administrator who could really oversee those pieces that fall to this office. And then the other piece to this report is management considerations. So these are things that came up throughout our work that do impact city operations, but they aren't necessarily staffing or workload issues. And so we just wanted to call them out because they are helpful pieces to be aware of. They're captured here at a high level. There's a much more detail in the report, but I'll just quickly take you through these pieces tonight. So HR decentralized at the city. It's shared currently between the city administrator and the deputy city clerk. This really isn't common among peers. All reviewed peers have at least one dedicated HR position and four have a full-on dedicated HR department. And then this is a really common area where industry standard staffing ratios are applied. And so if you were to align with that, it would put you at 1.8 full-time HR dedicated employees. So the rec here is to establish a dedicated HR department by bringing on an in-house HR manager. For information technology, so the city outsources its IT function. That's also relatively uncommon among peers, but there's positives to that approach. One thing it does mean is that there's not really anyone assigned internally to address smaller tasks that are IT related. So things like managing the city's approach to software and updating manual processes. And so our recommendation in this area is to look at those areas, see what you can get done and assign internally, and then really just continue to monitor your IT contract arrangement. So to see if any of those tasks can be assigned to them. And then org structure and functional alignment, this section is really just wrapping up all of those areas of misaligned functions that we heard about throughout the city. So it's just a one-stop shop spot to see that full list of functions that need to be reviewed, considered and reassigned if it makes sense. And then the last two here, so asset management, this is just, there's not really a formal approach to citywide asset management. It's happening in pockets. But a citywide approach really is a best practice for making sure that you're budgeting your needs correctly and minimizing costs and developing that is definitely a priority. And then contract management. So there's an opportunity for the city to take a more formal approach here to performance-based contract management. That can really help you prioritize and understand vendor accountability. And this is just another best practice. It's hard to get to when workloads are high, but something good to have on your, on your radar. And that's what we have for you. So this is just a reminder for next steps that this is this is a first step to identify future staffing needs and structure updates. It's really a snapshot of operations. It's not a report card. Nothing in here is required. It's information that's really meant to guide future staffing and structured decisions. And I would ask Cynthia if there's anything that she would add here before we move on to questions. In terms of next steps.
Presentation tonight, but their job wasn't to figure out, you know, for these recommendations, it was to figure out what stuff.
And I just want to say, first of all, I'm very grateful to our consultants for carrying out this really important work. Those that have been around a while know that I've been talking about staffing charges for 15 years, which was it now? When I came into office as mayor, we had fewer employees on day one 2017 than we did in 2008 before the layoffs for the rich decision. Which really highlights the risk and this situation we have been in. While some like to say that we've just been adding staff, we've been adding key positions to, to help, to help ensure that our operations run smoothly. And given this reinsurance, like direction we've been trying to go, making sure that we have the staff to carry out the day-to-day operations of the city and mean our legal obligations as well as our community obligations has been the right track. And that we still have a lot of work to do, which I've been saying for several years in regards to making sure that we become a city that is resilient, that plans for the long term, I think can support our community and growth, especially as construction causing construction development will slow down as we strip through too fast. So thank you for all of this good work. It's not meant to express. So thank you.
Our pleasure.
This is actually before sort of directing questions with the consulting, it was actually just a follow-up question for Cynthia and the mayor. And I know you said this was sort of an analysis of need, you know, not necessarily budget. The other pivot I wanted to ask is if we were to fill those positions, there's also a space consideration. Do we have the physical space that, that house, if we were to, again, budget wasn't a question. And we, we, I just was curious in terms of how to fit that into the broader conversation as we go.
So public works in the new building has spaces that were planned to accommodate potentially having some of the recommended positions. New development and priority really is to staff to open the current positions and then assess workload from there. We have a new permit specialist with a two-year term limit. Danny Seehall, Seehall has made you with people bumping up for, I don't know how long, actually at least five years. Yeah, a while. So in terms of capacity, we have room downstairs for, you know, two offices to be downstairs across from the former city history office. Finance, we've had two employees per office outside the director's office for some time. So tight, but City Hall's been tight for, here in decades. So I mean, the city is just made of work. Through renovations, you know, we have how many employees at the rep center for?
I had a similar question and Ling, we were talking about. I don't remember what it was, but we were having another conversation. workload for our city and comparable cities. And just looking at the comparables that we use, I see even if a few of them have the same, you know, kind of a smaller city such as ours, based on population. Those, even those are really an economic center, which adds workload of city staff. So aside from just looking at how many people live here, just a huge input daytime population, a lot of businesses that also rely on city services. Just very different than our city, which is a bedroom city. And so I'm just kind of trying to understand how that was worked into using the comparables, but also recognizing that our city is very, very different and it falls also to the revenue side of, you know, the practical side of being a bedroom city is we also don't have the revenue. But I also would say it's partnered with potentially less workload. Since we don't have all of those businesses also relying on city services. And so I just am curious how you took that into consideration when also using those comparables.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we compiled the list of peers, looking at who you look at for your comp study and then look at, looking at the list of valley benchmarking cities. And so we kind of pulled those together and then looked at population, full-time employees, and then the ratio of population to full-time employees. And we chose the ones that we're going to give you basically the most interesting information. So we chose about half that have a really similar ratio and then half that are going to show you where you're going to go as you're growing. And so that's how we arrived there. And I would say in terms of just like which cities are in or out, a lot of the outcomes that are included in the report that are a result of peer benchmarking are really just an average of the group. And so one or the other didn't necessarily sway it too far. It's more like of the cities from this list that are around and you have similarities and differences with all of them. How do you kind of compare to what most of them are doing? Is there anything you would add to that, Tammy?
Yeah, I would just add that for some of the functions like HR, IT and finance, that we also use industry standard benchmarks, which are ratios of what you should have relative to different factors. So you know, HR is relative to how many FTEs you have. Even in public works, we talked about some of the areas that we look at. So how many, you know, what's the parks that you're maintaining in terms of the, the square footage or square acreage there, as well as pipe and those types of factors as well to try to reduce just the impact on looking at only community size, but also really trying to understand the true workload that is associated for each of the impacted departments. But I think Annie makes a great point that you have similarities and differences with all of those cities. And, and each city really does have its own unique attributes as well.
Following our discussion about the Venus financial plan, they are adding to, based on recommendations from council, they're adding Black Diamond and Ryer to their analysis. And Tammy and you are going to pull in Black Diamond as well. Which is the conference closest in terms of the bedroom community with very little.
Mayor and then we have also rest. And I would say, knowing a mayor of lifetime, she's struggled with not having enough staff as it is. So even though in that analysis, it's only nine, and that's something that she has been battling with and that she is the city administrator because they don't have the funding to bring the city administrator in and ask them for some. So while those are being brought in, there are other factors to consider as well, including the fact that all strong mayor cities, when you have a fire department or everything, the fire department, they're providing the same services. All the larger cities are providing far less revenue and far less density of population to make up the gaps. So it's not just about numbers. It's about policy. It's about actual work that's required and the number of people you have to do it. And everybody's heard me for years, we don't have the people to do the work that's necessary. We've done amazing with what we got. But we are far behind in this relationship.
Councilmember, I think so.
Yeah, man, it's hard, right? And like the question that Jennifer asked me. It's not always an apple without, you know, green apple, red apple, orange banana, apple. It's hard. And every job of that is staffing. And you've got to respect this on the people who are doing the work always for it and you want to and we do, I'm laying the ground, but I promise you is we have numbers in these cities. But do we know these cities, are they overstaffed? Are they getting their work done? You know, it's, it's hard to do. If you have, we want, one of the metrics you decided was break the teaching. Well, to a man, you know, their potential inside this leadership is also a little work, but they're not feeling the work. But sometimes you offset that by your management relationship, really, living the work. There are really only a couple of metrics that are listed where we're failing or going to fail in the future, and that is permits that I saw in the presentation. I haven't read the whole report yet either. I'm just trying to ask ultimately, these cities that we use, how confident are we in their numbers? Because that can be wrong, two meters straight either way. And if you said we're overstaffed, when we use those numbers, that may be wrong as well. So I'm not taking the good either way. How do we know these are the right cities in their metrics and their data?
I'm so sorry. I'm having trouble hearing, but is your question how confident we are in the numbers that we have for the, the peer cities?
Yeah, how their cities are.
Okay.
Are they failing in places? Are they understaffed? Are they overstaffed?
Right. So we do not have that information. And we do know that we are confident in the numbers because wherever we put data into the peer benchmarking, we, it's just data that they release in their budget. So no guesses, so confident in the numbers, but obviously can't tell if that feels comfortable for them or if they feel understaffed. It's just up to trends, Tammy.
No, I think that's accurate. So our analysis was looking at how do you compare to those peers? And we also did meet with city staff as well to understand again, what are the current things going on in the city that might be unique? To try to bring in that additional analysis that is very specific to Duval. So that's where we were able to meet with folks across the city as well as do that all employee survey to understand their sense of overall workloads. And so, you know, this work wasn't really done in a vacuum of just saying, well, this is Duval and these are the peer cities. This is industry standard. Those are the results. It really was tailored specifically into what's going on at Duval and what is the employee experience at Duval with their workloads as well.
Yeah, that's a great point. If we had seen only that it didn't match with peers, but then we were hearing from city staff that it felt fine, wasn't an issue, we wouldn't really consider that something worth mentioning.
So in those conversations that we had with staff, we were able to talk about some of the trade-offs that have to be made on a regular basis in order to sort of fit the workday into the available time. So we were able to articulate some of that within the report as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for this end up before. I have noticed that you had a lot of recommendations for like restructuring different duties, like instead of having clerks off, take the utility bill and handle them, the finance department would, but finance department doesn't have to do that. So, you know, and there was a couple of other examples of that. And You know, and there was a couple of other examples of that. And. You know, I thought it was very well thought out. I mean, it is going to take a lot of. Restructuring, I'm sure, but. There's no gap gap, even with restructuring. So I appreciate your help. Sorry, Councilmember Stuckel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the, uh, cities that we selected for comparables because I don't. I don't really see us sitting here saying they have five directors and we don't have four, so we have to hire another director because they have. Uh, 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 you know, I'm not concerned about them and their staff. They're like, okay, that's sort of what they got. Does that really fit what we have? Maybe, maybe not. I'm more concerned with what. You identified in our report as being shortages. Um, and what the areas of need are, not so much that. Well, we have one finance director and we don't have a finance manager. That's other thing you have that. So we need to do that. But I'm so kind of, kind of not too interested in the, in the comparables because I don't. See that as, um, germane to our decision making here. But I did have a question on the asset manager and the, um, contract manager. Could that be, um, combined into a single role? And if it is, what department would you put that in?
Yeah, great question. So those are actually functions over roles. And so it's more about. Assigning that work than it is adding additional staffing to take that on. Um, so I think it could live a variety of places. We typically see asset management in public works. Um, and there's typical places for all types of functions, but it's really about what works for you. For those pieces. And we include, um, where we do typically see all of those functions in that section of the report about, about functional alignment.
I think, let's see. So I just wanted to clarify what my understanding is, and you told me if I got it right, and for everyone else too. Um, for example, in the clerk's office, when you talk about how they're doing things that others should be doing. Your recommendations on this report though are, are assuming everything stays as is in terms of duty assignment. Is that correct? And then if we wanted to reassign duties to help with that also, it might change some of those recommendations, like. We might need an additional role in anything to what you've already recommended for a certain department. Am I understanding that correctly?
I think so. Um, I think for the most part, yes. So the recommendations for the clerk's office, for example, don't say add staff, right? Because the, the recommendation is really keep, take work away to right-size their workload. Um, and so in that sense, yes. But if you were to reassign some of those functions to finance, it's a little bit baked into the consideration and that those are functions that we would typically see a finance department doing. Assuming that based on industry standards and, and peer benchmarking, that function is in finance, for example. Um, then that would kind of be taken into account, but that's definitely something that you're going to need to keep an eye on as you move functions is the impact on workload where you do move it.
Yeah. So when we were building the recommendations around staffing, we were thinking about if these functions were moving around, then what would that need to look like from a staffing perspective? So using that same example of asset management. If asset management moves from the clerk's office over into finance, well, your finance team is already very short. And so you're definitely going to need an additional FTE there, um, just to help manage the existing workloads and then to take on that additional responsibility. And you do see that recommendation to add staff in finance. So they are. They are separate recommendations, but they are connected in that way. And there's a similar concept with, um, you know, a deputy city administrator to be able to take on some contract management and human resources work as well, for another example.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you sort of partially addressed my, my question. Um, and again, appreciate the level of analysis. Um. I, I think one of the things, you know, these are obviously you've done in a, you know. In a silent approach, you're looking at, and, and, and even the comments that were just made around the interdependency, because there were some recommendations around. Um, labor receiving automation, other things. There was some reallocation of, of heads. Um, I guess I know that sort of the next step of this is the analysis and recommendations where you're moving to the budget process. And, and this, this may not be part and parcel of this, based on, on, on the statement you just made around the. Very much of a domino effect. You changed one thing and it moved something else. But in your analysis, your conversation with the survey results. Um, irrespective of what you're likely to hear as the city administrator and mayor, was there a specific department that was more stressed or more? Need, again, it's a little hard because there's silos and, and. There may be a, a, an even each individual department, but I was just curious from sort of a, you know, external neutral observer, if, if there was any additional pilot in terms of. Across the organization where there was a, an outstanding need or was more, more stress apparent?
This might not be what you want to hear, but I think it tracked pretty well with. The, the areas where we see understaffing compared to peers. Um, so the areas where there are like definite sort of. Shortages, it was definitely coming through and, and staff responses. Do you, can you think of a specific area, Tammy, you were referring that?
Finance, um, was particularly strapped. Um, your city administrator office was strapped. Um, because of the additional duties that have really fallen on, on, um, your city administrator, because you don't have in-house. IT or HR. And so a lot of those duties, I know that, um. There's a, a stipend, um, for a 10% deputy administrator. That person also has a full-time job. Um, and then I would say that that is the third area is community development. Um, and that's not to diminish the workload challenges of public works or the clerk's office. Those are just the areas that, um, sort of came out as a priority in the analysis, I would say.
Well, thank you. You kind of read first. But thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I don't know quite what I'm saying, but I, I'm not, I don't want to sound like I'm doubting that we need more employees. But it could be good work that could be done with more employees, um. That stage, but, um. One thing, just kind of looking at, um, the last couple of years and understanding our current feeling of. Um, you know, not enough people or it's more work than can be accomplished with the current staffing. Um, you know, if you look back until recently, we were running just barely 40 employees and now we're at the over 60. So there should have been tremendous growth. We also implemented Open Gov and are still really implementing Open Gov and trying to. Integrate a brand new si- uh, system that reaches into almost every department. So a lot of, um. You know, just the work of converting our systems into a new system, um, the training on the new system, um. Just, there should be tremendous amount of work. And then on top of that, we have new employees just because we've expanded our staff by almost 20 positions. And then we had, uh, public works didn't necessarily have a lot of turnover, but if you look at our city hall, it's almost 100% probably turnover in the last. Three years. Um, and so. You know, a lot of newer people to the position, new systems, um. It'd be very difficult, I would think, to really, um. Get a grasp on, you know, how much of the stress is, you know, potentially they have vacancies and. Um, all of those types of stressors that increase the feeling of not enough. FTEs to accomplish work. You get back on the work when you have vacancies. So anyway, I'm just, um. I, I don't know. I don't know if that could, um, what my question is, but I, I do think that. What I just explained potentially, um, has an impact on. How the perception of whether we have enough employees. Does that make sense? Just when you expand staff so quickly, we've had so much turnover. We've had a lot of vacancies, just taking a temperature of, um. The workload kind of during such an influx period feel very challenging. So I, I'm not really sure how to address that or if we would have another check-in. Once, you know, Open Gov is fully implemented and things are running smoother because we were, we need. The understanding is that it would reuse our workload, we potentially would need less. Uh, it would be, it would be so create much efficiency. Anyway, I don't, I don't know. If you wanted to weigh in on what I said or what you are.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, having new folks come in, it can be a time of change. Um, and that can also create changes in workflows that can be disruptive to what might be considered normal operations. Um. However, um, you know, we do this work with a lot of different cities with dozens, if not hundreds of cities. Um, really across the West Coast. And so we're also bringing some of the sort of trends that we are also seeing. From a lot of those experiences, um, we'd be happy to come back and look at things in another year. I do think that the experience of staff. Um, speaks volumes, um, and we do want to be able to make sure that they're properly equipped to be able to do the work that's being requested of them. So even for some of those areas of city hall where you might have had turnover. Like in finance, there are the peer benchmarking results, but then there are those industry standard results around just how many staff. You should have based on different factors. Um, and so that was also incorporated into that analysis. Um, so we really did try to sort of triangulate all of the results before we presented them. So we looked at. What is the experience of an employee at the city of Duval right now? We did try to meet with folks, um, that had a different, uh, sort of length of tenure wherever possible in their positions. If there were, um, folks that had turned over and maybe there was a more long-term employee within the department, we tried to be able to contact them and understand those changes in that experience. So first we had that, the employee experience, then we have those industry standard benchmarks of what do we see as best practice? Um, and we've quoted those throughout the report where they are available. They aren't available for every single function, but for the ones that they are available for, those are incorporated. And then we have the peer benchmarking results. And so we essentially were able to sort of triangulate all three of those data points to be able to say. This is a good recommendation for the city to be able to consider. And then within that, there's going to be a prioritization that the city will need to undertake in terms of what areas do you want to be able to fill those staffing gaps in first? So I hear, um, your concern that. It might be due to the employee experience, might be saying something different based on tenure in the role. But then there's those two other legs that are also sort of saying, okay, well, based on the comprehensive analysis, this is the recommendation to be able to. Address your staffing, um, and the workload that's expected of that team. So I hope that helps address that concern.
Yeah, we are representing our team manager. Um, because we contract our IT functions. Um, but I didn't see, or maybe you have it in the report. I didn't see it. Um, what, what kind of problems are, uh, we facing without an IT manager? And what would the problems be solved with an IT manager?
It's just really about there being one person who's ultimately overseeing things like software implementation, making sure you're getting the most out of the systems that you're using. Um, things like converting manual processes to be automatic and gaining efficiencies there where you can. That's just the type of thing that typically an in-house IT role would do and feels like it's always kind of at the bottom of the list for other folks who have a full plate. Um, so that's typically what an in-house, in-house person would do there.
And they would also be able to help support that contract management to make sure that, um, the contractor is operating according to the terms of the contract agreement. And then is also, um, you know, leading with the best practice for the city. Um, rather than necessarily trying to get you the, the, uh, you know, the Lamborghini. Maybe you just sort of need like a really good Ford Taurus in terms of your IT support. And so that's also the role of an IT manager, someone that has that subject matter expertise to be able to say. Oh, we don't need this level of service. We really need it right here. Um, so that's another factor that comes into play for an IT manager.
And we point out in the report, the possibility that that person could possibly be a deputy city administrator type. Um, depending on the background of a person, if you choose to go that route, um, it doesn't need to be a dedicated role. It could be someone with that experience who is able to oversee that contract and oversee those pieces at the city.
Um, I would say, um, and I don't think I hate you, so thank you for this report and all the work that I needed. So, um, just to be serious about the first time. I think there will always be more work that can get done, um, anywhere. Uh, we have to try and staff to the middle. And I think that the staff feedback, the survey is really important because. I think that's our, the middle will shift each year. And so that feedback from the staff is not just a simple hint, but the middle has shifted and we need to pay attention to that. Before people get burned out. And it's our job to try and figure out, you know, how, which to choose, how to add, and what to afford and how to afford it. Um, so I just wanted to have that as my, like, comment. And then Mayor, did you have?
I just wanted to close out and, you know, um, the, the city, the discussing city hall turnover. Um, I just wanted, you know, express that, um. All in all, the city will turn over this very, very good thing for the city. It is allowing new people to come to the city, in particular, uh, many of the people sitting in this room. They're far more experienced and, uh, than those that call their positions. And whether in city government or similar roles and responsibilities. That make their ability to come in and do the work not just easier, they get a lot more done. Um, also I would note that there's also the social emotional and, uh, personality that goes in. You know, what we've seen over the last two years, big turnover in city hall. Is we've seen, um, morale go up significantly. Uh, it's the highest morale that I think the city has ever seen. Um, and, uh, staff get along, uh, the staff appreciation lunch last week, most of the staff. Were here. Those that work are either on a, on a job or on a work day. Um, which I think speaks volumes to, uh, the change in culture that has happened. Which also should cause pause. Uh, when you think about the employee experience and like that, despite that huge culture shift and having. Positions build, more and more experienced people that are not entry level, we are not entry level city. Um, has changed that dynamic and the fact that we have all of this. Increased professionalism and experience at the table. And this is still, still the employee experience is something that. Um, we want to encourage everyone to take very seriously, um, as we move on to some very tough questions.
Well, with that, we need to save time for our last item. I just want to thank you both again for coming here tonight and presenting us with all this beautiful.
Fantastic. Thank you for having us. Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night. All right. Next up, we have our presentation on the 2025, 2026 for the preliminary budget. I'll have that over to the mayor and city administrator.
All right. Yeah, great. Uh, well, so this is not the formal budget. Um, that will be coming October 15th. This is a really, um, high-level preview of what we're looking at. Um, as we heard from our workload analysis, we still have significant gaps in the staff to operate the city effectively. That said, uh, the fiscal plan that we, um, have been talking about for 20 years at the city is around. Um, and, uh, there are going to be some significantly challenging decisions that we're going to need to make this year. Um, including, um, making sure that we're, we're funding our basics and not funding things that are not necessary. Um, there are going to be some very challenging decisions that Cindy and I, uh, have been making for the last couple of months. Um, on how to structure the budget for the next two years. And over the next two years, there will be some very serious conversations with council on how to stabilize, um, the budget with the 1% propping tax cap. And things like insurance rates doubling each year. Um, and in combination with inflation and the cost of goods rising, while our government cannot, um, legally make up that gap. Um, to fund basics. So, um, it will be challenging, but I want to, first of all, commend, um, city administrator, man, budget director, man. And all staff that have put their heart and soul into, um, not just forecasting our revenue, but also, um, analyzing and. Working to make sure that we put forth the best decisions possible, um, to the city council for this special decision. Um, this is not pretty easy. It's going to be, I will be honest, this is going to be, um, the hardest budget as mayor, but I will say definitely not the hardest budget. Um, because we have higher staff. Uh, I do believe we are in better position overall, um, than we would be if we're not, because all of the years that we have been able to. Boost and try and get up to that baseline level. Um, that's meant that we are falling further and further. Um that's meant that we are falling further and further behind in the piece of things. Um so as we deliberate, we share information. Um I encourage everyone to keep some of those things in mind. Keep your eye on what our role is in the is the government, what our legal responsibilities are, um what our community is asking of us, and the very difficult conversations that we're going to get us to not just a point with the balance budget that we will be presenting, but to a point where we can have challenging conversations about how to sustain and move the city forward and build resiliency, further resiliency, and through all of our work and relationships here. The city. But with that, I'll turn it over to city administrator.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. Uh Mayor Kate, a nice introduction to what is going to be a very challenging budget um for the city. So with that, I'll jump right in. So next slide, please. So let's see it, the agenda. So the first thing we're going to do is talk about the closing budget request for data and information uh to staff so that we can respond in a organized and timely manner. Uh I'll go over quite a few slides. Um begin to describe the decision-making processes gone into presenting this preliminary budget. So we've been working on it for a couple of months. Um and we started with maybe overall budget with the directors going in and having to begin projects we either know the community wants or would be beneficial to the department. And my overview is some of the decisions that have already been tentatively made or preliminary made on kinds of things that I've taken out of the budget were some of the decisions that the mayor and I presented was our preliminary budget. Um there also is a section on the police department, because as we've heard at the last meeting, um the police services comprise quite a bit of our operating budget. So just talking about strategies on how we can help maintain the police department along with the other city services that we know are important to the community. And then after that, I'm going to turn it over to finance director movement to go through the fund structure, economic overview, operating costs, fund balance. So next slide. Um so this is uh the, I spoke to Mayor Portam last week, and this is the process that we put together for a request for information and data. The budget, and it's like so the process that we have put together that we think will be most efficient is for questions or requests for data and information to be emailed to the mayor and mayor Portam. Mayor Portam will deliver those messages to me on Thursday, me almost every Thursday. Um so those will get to me on Thursday. I'll document left and lago in an Excel file, and then we will deliver the response back to city council to your email distribution list following Friday. It gives us about a week to respond to your requests. If there are follow-up questions, please email them to mayor or mayor Portam. These questions will be emailed to me on Monday. And then our goal is to then follow up and return the response by the next Thursday. Um that is the process that we came up with to try to be somewhat organized and deliberate in getting responses back to city council when we have questions for uh concerns over us. So overall, um the message of this budget that the city departments and the mayor have done, is we're going to be able to bring a balanced budget that is extraordinarily tight. Uh we will meet our reserve policy requirements through a combination of any amount of contingency fund and the remaining balance of the strategic fund. So under a resolution to the four oh four, we have a requirement for how much reserve we keep. We will meet that reserve requirement, but it's going to be difficult. Um this is likely the last biennial budget that will balance without additional revenue sources of revenue. Uh with add additional revenue to offset expenditures. Uh at the end of this biennial, we will have to make significant progress. Um in a very balanced budget. So this is basically as far as we can project, potentially the last. I think I have a question to stand. Um so for the last slide, I'm pleased. So as we heard at the last meeting, they surprised forty percent of the city budget. Um we do go into collective bargaining at the end of twenty, well, mid twenty twenty five, so new rates will be effective uh the second year of this biennial. So we, you know, we don't know what the impact will be in terms of that bargaining that will happen with the police, but that may push the amount of the overall percentage uh over forty percent. So we don't know yet until we get the police bargaining, but I wanted to identify that as risk. Um we're close to a mutually exclusive decision that will need to be made about maintaining a high-pushing police department with their staffing and the needs that they have and being able to maintain other city services and departments. And the staff PD are concerned about the commitment that the city has to maintain the police department. And so we just want to make sure that we are identifying, talking about the concerns that staff and PD have about um the potential of continued funding. And that makes a difference in whether or not they want to stay in Dubal. Uh we counseled staff to make a decision about our police chief hiring. Uh right now, the contract costs see the budget and amount of that position. So what you'll see in the preliminary budget documents is the salary of the chief, but there's also a line item professional services to cover the delta between the two. Um between maintaining our uh contract police chief. Um police chief hiring will be difficult in our current funding environment. So we want to make sure we identify that also as potential risk. Um investments are needed. So we have mentioned, we heard the chief's presentation a couple meetings ago. Uh the state of the police department has also many equipment needs that they have. Uh met with the chief a couple weeks ago. We prioritized those equipment requests. So we did get some of them in that have been identified as the the most important um in terms of safety. We're about three K short. Equipment costs did not make the budget. Um we also have police staff needs. We have budgeted for eleven mid twenty twenty six. Um preferably in order to um on a staff committee in the police department, we would have accelerated that to twenty twenty five. The current budget has been twenty twenty six. And again, this is a preliminary proposed budget of what staff has prepared for your consideration. Um as part of the conversation around the police department, I wanted to include a couple data points and options that you will have for uh revenue that's specific to the police department. So several jurisdictions recently in August of twenty twenty four went to uh ballot measures for public safety sales tax options. It is limited to point one percent. The vote of the public um is required. Our municipal plan peers that have one, the Carver just approved theirs in twenty twenty four. Monroe, North Bend, and Swim all have a public safety sales tax. So only approved theirs in August. So presented information on regionalization is the contracting. Um it's going to be challenging with the existing police staffing environment and costs. I'm sure everybody has read the news that Washington State is fiftieth in the nation for police staffing. Every police department, almost. I can't think of one that I haven't heard. And Chief, I'll ask you if you've heard of one that isn't understaffed or a task opening. So I don't know that there is one. Um so getting those subcontracting or regionalization services will be challenging. Um I did go ahead and look though at where King County Sheriff's Department does contract out for services in some of our neighboring jurisdictions, the cost of completed for that service. So in Woodville, um they budgeted five point seven million in twenty twenty four for sixteen positions. Uh chief, two sergeants, ten officers, two detectives. That also, that cost also includes um K nine squad, nine one one services through King County. More budget is seven point six million for bid in twenty twenty four when she went into twelve officers. So Manish was at eleven point one million in twenty twenty four. Foundation uses on King County, immediate budgeted in twenty twenty four, five hundred eighty thousand. I believe they have one point five TE roughly. Do you know the number a little bit?
Uh because they uh conquered to forty empty liquor shops.
Um and then Furyan um has budgeted sixteen point seven million in twenty twenty four. Includes the whole scope of services, detective squad, nine one 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 services. While with the chief captain for sergeant. And I included North Bend um in contracts that's still on me in twenty twenty four. They, that service was budgeted at three point four million. This is to increase the plan. That's what I understand. Conversations with some of them. Um the other option for and a bit of fat um for police funding. The property tax levy that we have currently expires in twenty twenty five. This is the levy that funds the school resource outs. So without it, uh in twenty twenty six, there would be no funding for school resource outs. Without um some manner of providing and funding. Uh in November, Monroe is voting on parks police levy. Uh Des Moines uh public safety property tax increase failed in August of twenty twenty four. Effort also attempted, but efforts was a little different. It was failed in November twenty twenty four. It was titled Public Safety and Essential Services. It included the community arts place, library, social services. Um so it was more of a kitchen scene property tax levy um as opposed to kind of it directed into public safety property tax levies. See, you know, parks and the least of those. And then in the last voting cycle, August of twenty twenty four, I just note that there are first levies in early calls. And that's probably did pass previously in the last election. Um so let's those are the police specific um what relative to the funding decisions that I believe we'll need to make in this budget. So I've listed other areas of general concern in the general, but in my presentation really is around the general, and in that, we just pick ones for specialty things. Biggest challenge we have relating to the general. So you just heard the workload analysis, kind of gave some major reviews of the U D spread. I did not include any staff received in this river, putting it down the city in this river. Uh this budget doesn't contain any T V or HR. Uh the budget proposes to be one of the enforcement activities with the emergency management coordinator. As you may recall, our emergency management coordinator is an ARPA-funded position. Uh we are proposing to operationalize those costs. And we believe we have enough workload for an emergency management coordinator, but we would add enforcement activities to that position. A good percentage of that role now will not hit the general end. It will largely be funded by utilities and other um other funds within our budget. Uh we are eliminating interns in the plans and community development departments. We are also eliminated, eliminating the ARPA-funded community uh communications coordinator. Um however, we are proposing this budget in terms of T P's. Uh parts maintenance promotions for weekend coverage. You'll see those in the departmental uh presentations that are going to begin on October eighth, that second Tuesday. We are including operationalizing the community events coordinator. We believe that that position has absolutely proven their worth to the community um has just been done as well. Separating the individual from the role. The role it's on has contributed greatly to the success of our community events here, and it's just done, I think, a tremendous job of kind of bringing in folks who are interested in the community network has waited has helped public works in terms of delivering community events. So we are uh in this budget, asking to that be operationalized in one position that is the general fund that came from the workload analysis is having that finance. That's the need that we've identified as the most critical of the past. Uh other department notes, and again, these are kind of high-level introductions with staff have been working on the last month or so. So the initial budget uh that the community development department put to um my view included a more permanent master plan. Um that was supposed to be cut from the budget. I do want to note that, because I'm trying to identify places where staff thought the real important work needed to be done included in the budget, but we couldn't make it work in that budget. So this is kind of a thing for places. So that was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We eliminated that proposal. Uh we are not able to budget consultant over for for non-mandated code revisions. These are things like short-term rental, mortgage, quality updates. Give the legislature, as I said, we will do this in this biennial. We are not budgeting um support for that. That's significant in that council has asked for certain code revisions that are not mandated. We will not have a consultant. Uh we've reduced the budget for special mailings and surveys. Um the business line is still in flux for identifying um a sweet spot for this, so it's been reduced. We may have raised it a little bit, but not significantly, but you'll see some massive change in uh the budget. Uh we have been told, Director Thomas was told in her front planning conference that she attended recently, that there is no expected grant funding for any of the required mandated code changes. So the design guidelines, shoreline management, critical areas, the general that has to cover all of those consults. Um we are carefully managing the harbor's costs, so our ability to offer free community con- consultations may be impacted. We have it, you know, completely remove that from this budget. But we are trying to manage the harbor's costs very carefully, maybe you know, not stingy, but not a huge generous uh budget amount for the community. Um for the tour, we've eliminated some training requests. Um so we had hoped to get our deputy city clerk fully trained on HR. We can put that back in. We would love to. In the meantime, because we are making no F T E changes to HR, that will continue to fall me. And then we've kept the human services brands at forty thousand dollars a year. This was an increase in the last biennial. Council had voted to give forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. We have balanced this budget with that amount in here, so it will be this something maybe one. Um so for community events, we did have a proposal for movie screen and audio equipment. We've eliminated that with try for grant. So this um color. We did just do a workload for grab that I've asked for a little more than you typically ask for for someone to stage should try to come with those costs. If you don't get them uh through that grant, we'll continue to try to find grant opportunities. We would really like our own movie screen very similar to having a stage. Having a stage in City of Dubal allows us to prompt community events quickly and nimbly. If we had our own movie screen and um, then we could also do um movies in the park. And more performance-based art, we offered the the uh community member who is dying movies um for the community uh might be going into retirement in that particular um uh community event. So we would like to try to replace it. Um we have budgeted for light up Dubal. We need light replacement. We don't replace that equipment. Uh our ability to light up Dubal is a jeopardy because this place don't really work. We're on the last one. For that moment. Um it is the twenty fifth anniversary summer stage this year. So you will see additional funding um in the summer stage line item to try to honor that anniversary. We are going to have our prioritized spending sponsorship opportunities and um potential donation opportunities to offset the cost of having a bigger twenty fifth anniversary. Um we do want to note that Dubal's support is in the budget. Um it is extremely expensive to do that. We've got this in America. It's over five thousand dollars to support that. Um so just wanted to note that. Uh economic development, all but the Port of Seattle match has been eliminated in this budget. So it's up to council to decide if we want to put money back to that line item. But right now, we are required, because we have like the Port of Seattle, we're going to match those funds. That's the only thing in that. And then legislative services, you'll see an increase in election services. This is again proposed to support any potential revenue measure vote that you all may or may not wish to take uh in order to get the source of revenue back into the general and in time. Uh in order to get the source of revenue back into the general in time to make a difference for the next biennial. We're probably looking at in August twenty twenty five. I think. Uh one more thing for me, and then we'll go to the thing which is with that. Um the cultural commission, so we've modestly put in fifteen thousand dollars uh budget each year for new projects and performances. Those are in the biennial art plan. Uh we have budgeted ten thousand dollars in maintenance projects for the existing art. Um so the biennial art plan, we're actually gonna have any vacant scenes of current uh public parts, you'll even estimate approximately ten thousand dollars in maintenance projects. The strategic fund has just a couple of things in the strategic fund. Uh there's a one time carryover to finish the top line of ninety five thousand dollars to carryover from this biennial. This budget, you will not see a lot of carryovers. Like when I came in was that the budget goes by council in twenty twenty four, we have projects identified that we would do those projects and not carryover costs if we can help it on plan. Now, there's been a lot of changes in law that's sparked us to spend that. This strategic fund also has lobbying services included. So you may need, if you decide to go and do election work. You probably need lobbyists to do that. Um because he is staff and you is elected not to do certain function and for uh great child support, safety stuff. So you're going to need some outside public consultant in order to, for instance, you know, write your write the material in the election ballot. So you need the services of someone else. Will have to do any kind of election. So I've included that in there in case you want to make a decision about um the elections versus you may need. In addition, uh the lobbyists that they have selected have some private and federal lobbying work. They just recent, the reason they were selected on federal level. They recently brought in eight million dollars for her bill for municipal campus. They've had a lot of success at a level. So our contract for services includes a split between federal and state. Uh less emphasis on state policy lobbying and more emphasis on middle income appropriations. Uh and then parks. Um we will need to have some additional revenue to support. The levy that's expiring in twenty twenty five includes funding for paper. That also will expire. Um so letting to consider would be potentially a police parks that together with a recent large twelve euro is two billion. Um that's one thing to consider. Uh we did, I did look into whether or not standalone metropolitan district uh would be an effective strategy. So just providing you some data here about the organizations that are specialties that have tried to do it and where they exist. Um other peers, none have a, the peers that we use for workload analysis, municipal financial. None have a standalone metropolitan park district, the North Bend case into Mount. Um and that was through voter admission here. Bonnie Lathan Snohomish voted to create a metropolitan campus district in those votes. So within the state, there are actually very few of them, there are only twenty three. And I've, I looked for the last like twenty plus years, I just identified the ones that have passed in the last ten. Um Colfax, West Coast, Olympia, Quincy Valley, Willow, Stevens, and some live in White's. You'll see on all of them, but they're common characteristics, they all have. So where do they have assets because you're providing aquatic facility or. Um so that's the high level, the department um presentations will begin on October eighth and continue through October fifteen. Um on October one, we'll do the venue presentation. And so, you know, we'll each, each meeting take a different chunk of the budget and start, you know, having those conversations. So I'm going to turn over to that, but before I do, I have to answer any questions on the slides. Um Councilmember Mercer.
I just had sort of one question. Um I in reference to the elimination of the community events quarter here. Um and yet the uh uh well, the elimination of the community, uh I'm sorry, the communications and then the retention of the community event. Is there any way that those two roles, there's communication component of the community events? Did you look at all this in any way that specifically built some communication capacity as part of that? And you didn't specifically call it up, but there seems to be some synergy in that role.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is take the work of the communication coordinator um and probably bring it back to where many of those uh work tasks lived before we were able to come on. Um including, you know, writing the newsletter. And there are these discrete tasks that were in different places throughout the city. This will likely have to return to the place they were on before. Uh the lending area, I believe it's in the executive budget, I but a little bit of budget for social media component to do some of the more higher level social media planning for us if we have very specific targeted um either events or communications that we would like to. That is in in anticipation of a social media strategy. If you had decide, if you decide to do some election work, you'll need someone to do social media. Which we would normally tend to communications coordinator, we will not be able to do. Um yeah.
Just add one point to that is like that communications uh can play be related to factual information. Uh if council moves in the form of election, the outside committee would be in charge of official elections communications. The purpose could only be for the intent of providing factual information and answering questions.
Yeah, I just knew this is one of the feedback items we would. This is related about communicating with the residents and there's lots of ways to do that. Um but it sounds like you talk through those pockets where it wouldn't necessarily go away, it would just return to the departments versus the dedicated central point for that communication.
Well, for for instance, um the work is unfortunate. If we can move work from the work's office to the finance team or on utility building asset management. That first team can summon a communication and potentially, you know, not do it as effectively as communication bargaining could have. Which is why we really don't have the finance position. It was in the workload study, so we can go and sit in the front office anticipating that we will lose communications.
Thank you.
Another question please.
I appreciate um just how detailed it was, your decision making to competition and doing forward. Appreciate um the one, the question I was going to ask earlier, and I realize now we're going to have a little bit more detail. But I was curious, um the state called a budget balanced, even if you use one. So a balanced budget doesn't mean that you have enough revenues to cover your expenses. It just means you have enough fund balance plus revenue to cover expenses. So when you said earlier, have balanced budget, were you referring to, we have enough revenue expenses or were you saying we use all of our movie plus use fun balance? We don't have that. We do not put enough of our money into the expenses. Okay. So we're using that, but.
Um and movies.
I mean, movies. Okay. So balance means kind of high level balance is much. Our expenditure is exceeded.
That's the one I asked. Yes, uh. The simple question, who specifically said we will have a very huge balance remanded? You said we've been, we've been told. Yeah, you kind of started off the meeting with commonest known here about the revenue shortfall. Not so much of this project, but in the following project, so um what do we, I kind of did, yes, but what do we have? Oh, is that coming up?
It's coming up, so the final slide before the time where I'm budgeting, you'll see the fund balances. And where we, with the budget we are presenting now, where we expect to land um at the end of the two year. I don't know if that was.
Well, my question was the budget after this.
The budget after this one.
Kind of implying that there was a huge clue that really is.
We're basically, if we don't figure out how to increase.
What was the? Is it a shortfall in revenue?
It's a shortfall, yeah. Do you have? Um. It's. Okay, um. The lobbyists is of the hope that somehow um in addition to helping us write um voter stuff funding, that they can go to the federal government and state government, which hopefully as much that the federal government and hopefully bring back for us to help make this work. So yes and no. Not necessarily on the revenue side, except for our state lobbying services. There are um items on the Association of Washington Cities, and I'm speaking for something that the mayor. But the uh legislative agenda for A W C includes things like making it easier for public safety sales tax initiatives to be initiated by cities. Um and changing those amounts. So at the state level, there are all two things that our lobbyists can do to bring in revenue. Our focus with getting lobbying services really initially to carryover from this budget was around appropriations. Getting the money and appropriating for Third Avenue, Municipal Campus, Public St. We Are. Those big infrastructure projects we don't have the money for. That was the original purpose of the lobbying um services in this budget and the reason that I put them into the like. That there's probably revenue work, but it's really, I mean, as lobbyists, you go to the state and that's for that one percent capital they did. And that's where it's on, you know, legislative.
Yeah, and I just would say, you know, raising the level of one percent of the parents' arbitrage, the one percent, there's no scientific or financial data to support. That has a good policy decision many, many years ago, whether the voters supported it or not. It was unconstitutional in the legislature. Um as we see inflation go from two to ten percent um each year, um things like insurance claims go up. Um having lobbyists and staff this year will in fact boost the Association of Washington Cities efforts and boost our efforts. Um and help ensure that our story is shared in Olympia. Um so the current proposal, what's being worked on right now for public safety sales tax is to make um the public safety sales tax what they call council manning, which means that you don't have to go to the voters. Uh that is expensive. Uh when it fails, it costs cities even more money. Uh it makes cities not want to go out for those um for those votes, um and politically they're much more difficult. Um instead of the elected officials doing the job they were elected to, which is fine, is to make your budget sustainable, uh fund services. Always. Um. Where property tax um is on the agenda as well. Um I'm forgetting offhand uh what other revenue ideas there are, but one of the things I can say very clearly is conservative, liberal, in the middle, small, big, large, mediums of the cities. Everyone was represented on the Association of Cities Washington, Life City Committee. And I will tell you that that vote for the agenda has two elements. Um which speaks volumes about the situation that cities are in across the state, regardless of political philosophy, financial philosophy, or anything else. Uh so I don't remember in the last several years. Um. Don't remember if passing the elements, I remember a whole lot more discussion about the revenue sources and and debate on whether or not those should be included in the agenda. That was not my priority, maybe this year ours not including it. Um that is partially because um many cities actually started seeing this uh in their jurisdictions two years ago, even with COVID trends. Um other cities have been facing huge gaps, millions of. Um we were boosted by our rapidly growing population with billing. Um and we're, that's starting to slow down and that combined with the additional costs and the inability to raise revenue is really what's hurt. So the law system really helps me keep that. Um you don't have a lobbyist since this sort of treatment plan. Um two thousand four, two thousand twenty, uh for any project. Um this has been our city hall and our buildings, this has been on the list to get to for many years. So this is a huge step. Uh and we also have to get to the point where we have some votes from council that supported moving forward with um making sure that we have facilities that are here for the long haul and that meet our needs. Uh if we'd done it ten years ago, we we'd have a city hall and we might have a very different revenue situation. Of some of those big decisions of big majorities. Um but for where we at and um lots of challenging decisions, but um if we have to keep our eye on the focus of what we're supposed to be doing, uh we will get there and then we'll find creative ways to make sure that we uh support our services we can do.
So I'll just say really quick, because I know there's a little bit more, but we're, should I, we're on the short end, sorry. Yeah, part, yeah, I'm thinking that. So quickly, I just wanted to say, um, you know, this is the tip of the iceberg. Um that I appreciate all the work that's gone into what we're sort, what we're seeing. I know no budget is ever easy, and this one in particular, I think is going to be difficult. Um so I just want to make sure that, you know, mayor, city administrator, all the departments, we really appreciate all the work that you put into it. Um and I say that before we all start talking out of. Um so just like I mentioned, you know, we appreciate. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and adjourn the committee a whole, and we'll bring this back and add it to our council meeting agenda this night to finish. Thank you. Even. And we we ran either. In the whole, but it's like, you know, see. On Tuesday, September seventh, do all the because we need to work seven one three P M. You know, please rise. I believe this could be a lot of. Considerable. With standards. When you. And we're all. He did his all for the literacy and justice. Thank you. We speak.
Certainly, um, Mayor Alperdamer.
Here.
Mayor Putang Mike Henry. Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Peter. Mr. Mercer, your Mr. Soffel, your Ms. Atherton.
Here.
Ms. Coolfield.
Here. All right, um.
We have any uh for under issues and corrections of the agenda? Uh, we with under. Uh, consent agenda, uh. Right after consent agenda, this part two of the budget for the only um discussion. And are there any other questions or changes to the agenda? I'm over.
Yeah, we have.
Uh, plasma reshaper. Thank you, Bert.
What?
I mean, you're. All right, um, we're motion to uh for this evening's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and now we move on to comments to the audience. Um, so if you are in person, you're welcome to the first of the podium. If you provide name and address, you'll have three minutes to speak. I think there are nine. Uh, so you will go in today and. Move on to. For the presentation, we have a motion for this evening's presentation. Some. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, as I said, we will move to uh budget.
Yeah.
Yes, added.
We're going to slide fourteen. All right.
I'm sorry, say again.
You can go to the next slide. So this is just a quick overview. Um, this is our fund structure that we are required um to follow. Um, for all accountability and reportability of our financial resources. Go ahead to the next one. And this is just a nice visual of all of our individual funds and um you can see the. Um, that each one sits on. And nothing has changed. We've had. No, maybe fun for someone. So go into the next slide. So uh we'll just do a um a better quick couple of slides on just an economic overview. Go ahead. Okay, so this is just showing um. History and trend of our CPU. So for twenty twenty four, June to June percentage change is three point eight percent. Which is down from um twenty twenty three, which was at four point six. Um, this is just a. Not a very quick slide, but a a quick site on um unemployment. So after a winter spike there. Um, in twenty twenty of uh some points. Unemployment has flattened back out. And so as of July twenty twenty four, we're at four point nine percent unemployment. Okay, um, so this is just um some sales tax trend. Um, and this slide does include retail and sales tax from construction. So after a jump in sales tax for twenty twenty one. Um, sales tax has flattened out a bit. Um, so twenty twenty four sales tax revenue until the date. Um, we're about nine percent over um our twenty twenty three corrections. Um, and. Yeah, I mean, and we're we're increasing because when you look at total twenty twenty two, um, it was just a five percent increase in twenty twenty three, which was one percent. You know, the facts. Really. I'm good. Um. Basically, this is just, you know, kind of what we already are realizing. Inflation remains high. City revenues are not increasing at the same rate as our expenses. Unemployment remains low. Are these? Go to the next slide. Yeah, these are just um some points, some data points and some notable changes for what we're facing. Um, but. We have our. King's Girls Collective bargaining agreement, which is. I think for twenty twenty five, that's. Point or three point six nine. Um, medical rate premium increases are seventeen nine percent. Um, for twenty twenty five, and our WCI insurance costs are increasing. Twenty one percent. So it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars more than our twenty four. Right. Insurance costs. Okay, so these are just some some quick. Let me just say, this is a first look at the work that's being done to uh create our city's twenty five points of spending budget. It has taken a tremendous amount of effort to get to this point. Um, it's not just me, and it has taken the entire team. To certainly in this budget. Um, we have more work to do. Um, but these are a few slides to kind of um show you where we are, um, and raise some information on some of our operating funds. So here we have the general fund, um. It's just a nice little visual, um, kind of where we've been and where the trend has been. Um, we've estimated where we're gonna, where we think we're gonna land at the end of twenty four. Um, and this is our preliminary twenty five and twenty. Um, six budget with some actual. You can go to the next slide. So here we've got some numbers um for you to look at. Um, so I think there's a couple of things to note. So when you're looking at twenty five and twenty six budgeted revenue there at the top. You're gonna notice there's a difference between twenty three and twenty four. What you need to note is in the twenty three and twenty four budget. We have transferred of funds into the general fund from our. And for strategic fund, the expenses. Um, processed through our general funds and brought the funds over to support those initiatives. And twenty five and twenty six, we are not going to be that. Um, and so those amounted to close to nine hundred thousand dollars. So when you look at that, our revenue is really. You know, pretty flat. Um. So, um. The other thing to note too is we have a history of being conservative um with our revenue and um. Kind of pretty focused with our expense, um, wanting to make sure that we're covering our needs. But what happens? You know, in actuality, so our for for many years for the past, probably till twenty, since twenty twenty. Um, we have budgeted. Less revenue and more expenses. Utilizing, paying to use our side balances to cover. In actuality, we usually bring in more revenue because we conservative. Conservately projected our revenue and actually spent less because we've done a better job of managing how we're spending our money. So we've not really eaten into our. General fund balance. And it's when you look at twenty two and twenty three actual, that is not, we were actually budgeted to have less revenue and more spend. But the actual, we actually, you know, turned it into um more of a balanced um approach there. So. As we look into how we're budgeting, you know, in twenty five and twenty six, um, we are continuing to be conservative with our revenue projections. Um, but we do have, you know, a lot of initiatives and and uh. Fund that needs to happen and support our services. I can go on. So we're just going to move through some of these. And here's our street operating funds. Okay, um, so this includes a portion, our revenue includes a portion of property tax, um, when the street use permit, these motor. Vehicle fuel tax, um, revenues that are pretty consistent over the last. Couple of years. Okay. Um, okay, moving on. Um. Yeah, it's kind of um nice visual there. You can kind of note our spike in um revenue for twenty twenty three. Um, and how we're trending down as we're moving forward. So um our billing permit, the income, you know, and it's it's quite a after that twenty twenty three um spike. You go to the next one that showed our numbers. Um, it's important to note that, you know, this fund uh receives our school impact the income. Um, but then it's also um has a corresponding expense um under professional services as that goes out. Um. So, and. I've also listed that any fund balance here, so our so our revenues are trending down. Um, we do have that at the balance. That's important. A big rockfall field, um. So this one is the fund that receives income from our parks levy and our active base um for the field. Pretty balanced on, you know, increasing revenue and of course maintaining um appropriate sounds. Um, need to support our. Parties. These are utility funds, um, you know, they remain. Pretty healthy, um, not much, um, to note here, revenue meeting expenses. You can go ahead and. Our water operating fund. Okay, you can you can use the. Okay, sewer. Yeah, you. Yeah, I'm still. Okay, so now we can get to our fund balances. So if you go to the next slide, so this is fund balance projections. It's the overall with all of our funds. Um, we have projected twenty four revenue and sums with an empty balance. Um, our budgeted, our current projected budget for twenty five and twenty six. And then you'll see our twenty six projected. Fund balances. What you will do, Jackson? What you're seeing here. I'm happy to take any questions.
I know it's very small.
Yeah.
Have a question.
Yes.
Councilwoman Al. Yeah, I just, I'm trying to sort out. So it looks like we're about a million dollar investment. Each year on the general fund, we're uh having to use up about a million dollars in the fund balance.
Yes. That's what we were budgeted for twenty three and twenty four to. Million dollars.
That training would. Continue up beyond what we're working on here. We don't make other.
Exactly. The revenue is pretty flat. It's not a great thing that the revenue, our costs. Due to factors that are beyond our control or for most of the expenses that we're going to need to. To deal with in the general fund. So, yeah, I mean, fortunately, we have some balances that, you know. We can get through twenty five and twenty six, and I guess it's two years to kind of make some decisions that we want to bring. Balance being out.
I'm. Yeah, just I agree. This assumes no new revenues. This right up here, no new revenues.
Correct, Scott. Yeah, we have not. Backed in any new revenues. Just projecting out the current ones that we have which we.
I'm over.
Um, being revenue, so you taught earlier, we think we're very conservative, I mean, based on our revenue, but then our earnings will be better than what we planned on. Do you have? Um, I don't say it's not, but the way to give the trends of that. Uh, where we plan this, this is where we actually have to plan this. But we've been friend, very good. Making our decisions, that's what we always play conservative with. And let's do that. You don't know. I think we're doing the right thing, so we sort of, but just. Interference for us, like this is the reality. So it may not be as bad, or is it really? It's kind of been on my mind.
The thing is, you know, we, I mean, a lot of things we don't know what's been happening. I mean, we've been very fortunate that, you know, some things that. In that are in a positive way. You know. As we get. Closer, we'll kind of have a better to think out two years from now to know what's going to happen with sales tax revenue, what's going to happen in that pre-tax or it was, you know. It's hard to say.
I'm not saying, but I'm just curious. The worst.
Yeah, so we did start looking at, see, calling for the beginning of, you know. We're budgeting and then what we actually, what will be actual to see those trends, and I can absolutely discover some information to show you. You know, budget to actual for each year.
I'm from a more certain than.
Yeah, this is just sort of a clarifying question. I heard or misinterpreted. When you had the the big rock found up here, I think we talked about there was a comment made around the expiration on the levy for the funding of the big rock, but it still showed revenue. Into twenty six. I'm curious if that was an error or if it continues forward from twenty five into twenty six, that is what. Who had interpreted. The end of that levy in in relationship to the.
Why? It depends on whether we can. Continue. We go back, go ahead.
Well, let me just recognize them and deal all. Uh, in the presentation, it's just there, the King County Parkway, which has its own sign that which is not.
Okay.
Yes. With the city uh voted like. Okay, this is different. As a six year later, that started last year.
Okay, that's another sort of clarifying.
And then the other one isn't charged for good and third, which is what we target for.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We are in such a quick story. Director.
And we know that the market said it's going to be a little bit, then it's showing doing. A revenue without that. So obviously, that's every other product that's in there that will break forward is. Don't, that grant. Okay. Part of it by others, but we just put revenue in there, knowing that revenue. It obviously won't go forward without revenue. So we just put it in there, that was the only thing left. But fine, maybe we have a grant uh coming out in. Couple of weeks, so it's on that, but not all that. That's all the reason it's got to be.
Yeah, I'm just having a little trouble seeing the chart. But your first three rows are the general contingency and strategic. And then if you go over or call into the projected ending fund balance. Is. So, so, um. Where is the? The deficit that we've been talking about.
Right, we should, you're using our fund balance. So when you look at the end of the. Um, general fund projected fund balance at the end of, so like the top, I just looking at our general fund. We've got, we've got three million dollars projected balance at the end of twenty four. So that's the. Right, that first section, so so our starting balance is three point seven. At the end of twenty four, we're going to be at three million. At the end of twenty five, we're going to be at two million.
Okay.
Because we're going to use a million of it because we're we're revenue. Our expenses succeed our revenue and then at the end of twenty six, we're going to be at one million.
At the end of twenty six, we'll have a million in the bank.
Exactly, so. Right, so if our revenues are excess, our revenues aren't matching our expenses. It's not.
Maybe there's more slides. But in my mind, I was thinking about how much a one sale tax would be, which is. What's that half, what our T E D revenue is, is that right? So what is our annual E D revenue?
Four hundred thirty thousand.
So half of that, so even if we passed it, it would only make about two hundred thousand dollars a year. If you did a public safety sales task for them. I think a way to view it is you're either investing in equipment, but from a staffing perspective. One point five of D ish.
Yeah, and this is a lot more.
Director, Nick, Nick, and guitars of the fund balance, um. If you can explain the council, you know, our reserve requirement, how much, you know, there's. You know, we've got newer members, we have our reserve requirement, it's policy, and then we have the fund balance that you need. And in order to pay bills, first caller here, and have a cash in hand to start paying for the next year's bills. Um, so there's a certain amount that has to be, because taxes don't come in and lump sums right within the year, it's delay. Um, there, while it may look like it's pretty large, looks like it's pretty large projected ending by balance. It's really not when it comes to actual day to day operations.
Yeah, we have the facility to continue operating in care bills and make payroll and. You know, that's why the reserve requirement is two months of operational expense, which is about seventy percent. So that's what that one way that is on the side of um. The reserve requirement right there, which is. Um, that's basically two months of our operating. So when. Property tax comes in in the spring and the fall, you know, but you need to make your little shortcut. Well, so having is what gets us through that operational year of sound. Continue to operate, so. We can't get much proven where we are and able to meet our our table needs.
And Director, I'm being, I'm perfectly wrong, but at the end of twenty twenty six, that that contingency fund actually goes up to all state here a thousand. Um, which means that while we are still spending fund balance, we are still committed to. Making sure that the contingency fund exists in the long run for those emergency events that's in addition to the reserve policy. So that is one thing um to keep in mind as well as we move through the dispute budget discussions. Um, in this very preliminary final um delivered budget. Um, this is continues to be, has been a priority of the administration for the last seven years and continues to be a priority. Um, to make sure that we're keeping those reserves full to policy and doing what we can to keep that contingency full to plan for the worst case scenario. Um, having those hold at the end of twenty six will help mitigate. Some of the challenges in twenty seven, if revenue is not able to be raised, but it will not get rid of the problem. Um, and then puts the city in a vicious cycle. So. Uh, the last several years is the first time, I believe, the history of the city with being able consistently find the contingency fund at its statutory limit. Um, and I think that's a testament to staff's significant hard work over the last several years. On um not just budgeting conservatively, um but also. Um. Making decisions uh that are planned and based on what we predict to be the future. Um, and making sure that there's that safety net um for the city and for future city councils.
All of our um. Funeral and general fund. Follow that. They basically. Answer them, but any of those that in the. In the. Like they are. Do we have any legal ability to ship those, any of those to the general fund?
Yeah. Those are restricted plans for.
I didn't think so.
Maybe even creatively about how music.
Uh, well. There are provisions in the state law to use refunds for operations as a fourth of all. But the big number or ratio of like. For your revenue, so you can use some of those sometime capital funds for real estate excess. To offer operations. City hasn't done that. But that is a couple of ones. It's not a huge number, but it's, you know, six figures closely.
Yeah, I know, I also know that REIT is typically used for capital, um, so when it comes time to building, especially next city facilities. You know. My my personal policy for recommendations to never use REIT for operations. Uh, because as capital facilities are what's going to come forward, it's always going to be fun either. Improvements or building facilities, um, and so keeping that kind of operations and running. Other strategic ways to fund operations is that. Uh, the REIT is intended just under state law as to be capital, but. The option for operations came through out of the recession. But. That has led to, I think, legislators thinking that cities should be using REIT as a stopgap before. See for other measures rather than looking at the holistic picture of budget and what jurisdiction cities and counties need to. Uh, Councilor.
That just, I, you had pointed out with the building permitting fund, we're using up fund balance, and I just wanted to mention. Uh, for the members that weren't here, when we kind of that fund got created, is the idea was that that would happen. Because permitting money sometimes comes into its front end and then you have the work that follows, um, sometimes. Like, you know, a lot later, and so that's completely expected that we would see some of that fund balance used up. So that personally doesn't certainly, but I just didn't know. There's where.
Where that was expected.
I may have pretended, um, since we're at the end of the slides, I just wanted to ask, so starting tonight, are we moving forward? At any point, we're going to start that process of questions, feedback for the. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you want to. Yeah, so if you have something, you can give it to me and I will start creating.
Yeah. My only request to counsel would be um to, knowing that I meet on Thursdays to try and get it to me Wednesday night or first thing Thursday morning. So I can copy paste them, but it's the one, I'll start the administrator, but I'll do my best if anyone has the last bit of stuff under. And um, I've no, you know, normally, um, we're doing things a little different because here, um, and normally the mayor's budget message comes out. As we start talking about the preliminary budget, this year we're doing it uh on the evening of the budget public hearing. Um, I think there's a lot of benefits to that, at the least of which counsel getting an insider review of the budget before that message is delivered. Um, and so that would give you a pretty good idea of what's going to happen in that speech, um, as well as that. Providing that speech before budget carrying will provide comprehensive budget for members of the public that are listening at that time and want to. So we're a little bit later, but I think this is actually going to work better. We'll see how it works this year, see if we do it next year, um, and then the next fair.
Yeah, just um. On, so last budget we used Olden Gov, which provided its own challenges of not really able to drill down. And what should be done and then, you know, challenges of. You know, not to be able to, you know, interview it. How are we uh going to be deliver a copy of the budget, feel to see the line, I guess, and all of that? Is it going to be online again? Will we have a copy that is? In document?
There are options. Um, I will say that. I can export a into Excel all the line items from the. So that is a possibility if you're like me and you just scroll through and you have quite an understanding of what you're looking at. Yeah. Um, but, um. Access to think of to look at, I mean, that's something, I don't know what the access was prior, so I'm not sure what we. Would want some.
We can discuss. You know, we both, we have to, we'll be providing a copy of the budget. Uh, that is a requirement.
Yeah, he will be duplicating the budget book.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at the whole budget right now and. But it's kind of online version, my goodness disappeared, looking good, it's like I have no physical copy of the last budget. And so I just wouldn't want. Because it was really challenging last time. I know everything was new, a lot for not getting bigger, but it was period.
We very much appreciate this year's new tax, our performance provided, so we have. First time represented, um, working with us, we we were on a um, a a from O D A on a weekly basis. As helping us set up and navigate, um, you know, it's it's a lot of work, it's a very robust system. There's a lot of people that would be, and we did realize there are some reasons and things in the prior. Um, you know, see the recording, but it's not working at all. No need to bet. Um, we, he will be supporting us through uh from the beginning of our twenty five, twenty six. Book, staying great. Form to.
Okay, thank you. George Luthman, thank you, the administrator of that and all the staff who have contributed to this extraordinary. Thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to our schedule panels. The first up is the mayor's work. I've got a pretty quick one tonight, just a reminder that this is coming on your influence association. Meeting is here in Duval next Wednesday. Um, it's also the same night as the. That's how cities association will be there. Um, so it'd be nice to see representative. Us and town or make it from a living. Uh, Remy will be in a good presentation here. Um, and then, uh, just as I mentioned earlier, the special Washington cities. Apparently the legislative committee approved legislative agenda for the V I M. Um, we have ruled, um, the final approval, like we've had less than hour. And don't recall then sixteen or fifteen years. Um, as ever getting through a final vote that quickly. Uh, and again, I just want to stress that it was a very diverse group of elected officials, um. And from cities and towns across the state and really truly the entire state was represented at the table. Uh, so I think that again is a testament to the work that cities are doing and also the positions we're in. Um, as we're looking at challenging issues and what we need from our, yeah, to to keep our hands above water and improve policy as well. Um, starting tomorrow, I'll be at the Association of Washington Cities for retreat in the Tri-Cities. Um, so that's where we will officially approve the legislative agenda as well as the budget for. The community of Washington. Um, and other than that, uh, I think it's been pretty quiet with the budget, so. And we will move on to the city administrative board.
Thank you. Excuse me. Okay. Uh, so we will begin with an update from our public works director. And then, uh, if there are questions, we'll ask him right after and then we are going to release him to enjoy.
Good evening, everybody. Only words. Uh, this slide here, you haven't heard of one fifty yet, that are about nine hundred percent, please, just finish the guts for the land seat and keep back, fill. Pullouts, uh, the top right is the expanded crosswalk section with this. Speed, of course, that the road. But uh, that is two seventy eight, one fifty. And then a little before and after with the drug count on the left is after, right is before. One thing to notice is the single simple central line that is yellow and how wide lane is on the right side, which would be the westbound lane. Obviously, the less concerned you feel the faster you drive. So the reconfiguring thing, um, there's a whole image there in the bottom one, the the channel data. Basically, from the curb line, there's a light lane, it doesn't need a light in any direct account up and down hill. Two travel lanes and then the crosswalks and any extra space. Was harvested and left on the uphill side, we tend to go so little, and you do down though, just drive four or five south. And we get that reported part, which is why we're free flowing it thirty miles. So that, um. That's how that roadway uh project ended up, there is a little configuration to correct at the end of the east edge. For the center line, you know, by even the box center, for the term constantly even the men. But I'll send that to a great job, uh, so to wrap it up. And. There are plus seven eighty across crossblock range, which is great news too. And we did have them, uh, normally they tell you there's a regular room shrinking and some crosswalk, all thermal plastic work. So they're two different teams, but the thermal group didn't get out here, so we actually had this contractor under change order. Um, do the crosswalks belong to seventy fifth and all the other roads in the town? That can be excited. Uh, our goal was to use two years, so our, um, to have our arterial that brought up and then. Not necessarily every neighborhood when you're walking across, you know, two seventy five, two thirty three, whatever it is, but. Where there is a arterial adjacent to a a subway that we're near, we identified those crosswalks and stop arms. Those were just where we had this group, uh, they were willing to allow that out there. Uh, so we brought our expansion, we were working on our subletal or the student concentration feature brand. Uh, they would do, I think, today or the next year. We're we're on time and submitted, of course. Um, we did ask for about four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars or more, that's become the estimated purchase price for factual. Uh, we are in, uh, N E X for thirty thousand dollars, which is completely separate for site location cost, if the A P money. It was basically the same life work. Uh, but the the really good news is those in four five and two four oh, the north side part, we closed on Monday. The city owns the two pieces of the line. Uh, so that happened, uh, very helpful from that and the finance team, the wire money and fuel and that kind of stuff. It's kind of frantic, like you don't wonder what agents do when they just propose. A lot of rhetoric back and forth and settlement, settlement, settlement costs, charges, and costs for stuff. Uh, that was done on Friday and Monday. Uh, that was done on Friday and Monday at Altheum.
I would say it would add that there's a lot, there's a lot of talking and singing via phone.
Yeah, there you have it.
It's been a lot.
So that's a great use of. Uh, next slide. And then you have noticed two, top right is before, bottom right is after, going to the Dory Farm, so the entire part of the final office was set to do that this year. That was done this, the past, uh, two weeks, it is about thirteen and a half meters. We do all of them further than the bottom floor, but it's a delay. So the contractor just went as far as they, well, I'm getting a check for stuff. Uh, we did issue a citation today, the, uh, certified now to the D Network side management fellow, uh, he's Adam Warren. He did give it a break for a couple of months and then he is in full force, so, uh, we're working on that and we'll see where it goes, but it's, uh, it's current citation, load the dollar, it's under all the products. Uh, bottom right is, uh, end of an era, they are coming down, this will be grand. Go ahead, have on the schedule, I actually received a message by, while we were sitting here, but just saying, hey, there were great lots of positive comments, the problem happened, I mean. Uh, and, uh, hopefully, I think you might see in the council package, uh, security testing, a dream plant, we're adding some defense, defending the center date in the upper area offices of the operation. Hello, uh, the R R B on Main Street, which were acting in the packet, the chemical, uh, the cannabis contract for one forty seconds. So they're only installing the rapid flight beacons in Old Town and then our theater sites, like the services will be coming. That is my last slide. Yes. Yeah, can we get the name or the type of the petunias that were in there? You know, I want to have the dead. I don't, yeah, I don't know why I look. It's honestly because of the cost of wiring and it's perfect. But I do know a recipe when you pull it in. Oh, wait, no.
Yeah, that's funny, I had just run in her live and she was not, oh, we're the petunia, so I think she said it was a superpetunia and possibly she bought the minus substitute. Yeah, and so anyway, yeah, chance maybe, but it was funny, but, uh, the reason I am asking a question during that conversation was she wanted me to ask both on market vegetable, if there was, uh, a north side that they timeline for the stir. People are, they're just not getting the, um, lantern festival, some of those other ones that happened in the three months.
Yeah, I advise our expensive advice are to be in the slow state, so to speak, for all major. But we're going to.
Potentially done then.
By February, but not.
Yeah. We've already kind of pre-talked about that, or really that they, truly, that they can. Let's start thinking about the after we get through dating and some practicing for other, and then cookie the, I mean. But we have to do a permit. No free lunch.
And if we still sit together, we probably.
Yeah, because it's only not on the like the time on the floor. Her, her, her day.
So we're moving along with our part children's stage plan, uh, we have our opening house. Monday, I know that you all. If you have any, any, for any sound contact, the whole report about that information on the big public hearing in our government and trying to. Starting to see a lot of documents coming into the campaign plan, hiring, which right now is goals and policies. Uh, because that is, it's just happy, it's a lot of additional requirements to both of that. Um, interviews, see how this is, I've been here. This council package, the written forms, there's a man's property, um, document in there and on ten eighty one of our questionable. And we will actually go through the recommendation and explain what the capacity is because it was at the top of the turn. And then, and a lot of the commissioners, and so we'll, we'll be working on it next month. Uh, next time, government will be more mixed, I think, on ten one. I can go over there and welcome to all the goal quality and some of the made up. So the building department, you were still obviously continuing to be then being running in the family with, um, inspection, inspection, you're really issued so many permits last year. And it's the end of the fiscal year for many of our homeowners, so they're trying to get a lot done by the end of October. So those are just kind of our performance numbers that we look at on a monthly basis. We have almost issued, uh, the same, uh, for all projects. If you do usually by year end and seeing the concessions, so we'll, we'll be above the average. And those are just pictures of development, the developing outs, and the bottom right is sixty-five degrees. And the top is lower ridge, block twenty-one, the lower lot, so you can see they're working on, uh, sign replacement in that top. Excellent. And now I'm just, a couple of other pictures, you can see how busy the field is. Up top is whole other, there's some phase four, so you can see there's just a lot of the stuff to develop. We definitely have power to be really mindful and watchful of work hours, um, because we have seen some complaints, I would be like. But this pleased the president, we do some, the volunteers on notice and let them know that they could, they decided other last contract was, right? Because we observed over two weeks, by the way, she's not very single project multiple times. So if, uh, we always say, you see and say it, and then we'll go out because the next time the project's too timely, the work hours, they will be shut down for four days. On the entire state, which is our only stick, by the way. So the lower, uh, area is, um, just another project that's sunset court, uh, turn forty-third, it's a small infill development. Um, just if anybody was curious, I wanted to show the, I mean, we just received this out a week and a half ago. So this is the Duval Village, um, essentially makes these project. So it has twelve thousand seven hundred square feet of commercial space. It's technically two separate buildings, or the top of that end rate. There will be four apartment units above the commercial area and those apartments will be one and two other units. So stay tuned, uh, they didn't initially have residential within that project, but they resubmitted it, they helped them pencil out the project financially because commercial loans are really difficult to get right now. And this will be really the first two, next two project, maybe that's in progress where it's a number of approach. Next slide, yes.
I'm not sure, it's probably, you should, four probably, this is fourteen, is it a tag or do you choose this?
Um, this is, it's, yeah. Uh, this one in the whole others, commercial development competition, that is a twelve thousand seven hundred square foot commercial base. It right now, they have a behavior, um, we have been in communication with them, we, we sent our last comments in July, so we can shape with them today. It looks like they're going to be resubmitting here in the next four or five weeks. We, we reminded them today of our relationship with the development agreement, so stay tuned. For me, the city health affair, are there any other questions you would rather come? I was wondering, I was just curious, um, I see there are some residential units on the Duval Village, and for some reason in my mind, I thought when that project was done, that all of the residential got shifted into where the residential is and then all the commercial. Do you know what I mean? Like that entirety of the project had a number, certain number of the left. Residential, and it shifted all of them on to the, the one that all of them. So the purpose, that's for us, okay, yeah. And so they have put all their residential units on the north side of the park road. This particular project, any controlled building, any non-residential, uh, not, not the place, the national make. Where they do, it's based on our, our key standards, it's for big services, that office. The station on that is the state, which is, it's gonna be some changes for us in parking. Okay, last slide, so, um, it's not likely, we will need this Tuesday in October, um, ten eight for, um, the beginning of the department presentations for the budgets and individual departments presenting. Uh, with the way city staff calendars worked, uh, we needed to, uh, backups for those department presentations. So we'll be splitting them in half, half flipper on ten eight, half flipper on ten fifteen. As well as the ten eight meeting, um, would you have some planning calendar? We'll also have the land use element and the land use. So we will, we will be using that special on ten eight. Um, we may need to have the second meeting in November as well, it's the day after, um, let me see what it plans on. I think it will be November twelfth, it will be the day after veterans, maybe that is most depending on public calendar looks. The timeline right now with the budget anticipates getting it to Thanksgiving, so, um, we can, which we give everyone a middle of the way in December, we'll be home. But maybe that's a committee in November to accomplish that, or if that's one's push, I can do that, but just wanted to, uh, put that in your ear. A reminder, the next meeting, October first, is the council workshop for, um, the fireworks community discussion. And Mayor Porton and I talked last week, we're thinking about doing a piece with council, public outreach to encourage community members to attend. We planned to, um, meeting, each one, at least a local, in the two building, there are two rooms here up front while council does some presentation. The community can come in and out, I'll facilitate that fireworks workshop while council is doing the room. And then the way we'll structure the calendar is then to kind of pause the cow so that council members can, uh, participate with the community in doing that fireworks. So, uh, more coming out of that, but we do have some organized activities and questions we're planning to put up for the community members who want to commit and then identify some. Um, the agriculture grants, we put in for Dory Farm, we put in, um, over eight thousand dollars for improvements. We have a background for agriculture that they needed to resubmit it, but the Duval Historical Society's grant fee agency instead of us. Um, so we are working hard as of this afternoon, there's only one field left that the historical society needs to complete, but we can transfer that application. Um, I had done the majority of the, the writing on reasoning and the project itself, we just need to transfer some of this stuff. Um, so that's still moving forward. Um, hopefully we'll get a good chunk of that eighty-plus thousand dollars to do some improvements on minority farm. Uh, so nine twenty-five is, uh, unfortunately a triple booked day for you all. Uh, partial difference based open house, S B G A meeting is at the Riverview Administrative Building and then, I think he said. Um, so we are hosting that, um, the food is going to be from Ammanos and staff are presenting on this premises for special events and the agenda also has created for the S B G A meeting, if you're interested. And then I heard last night late that the teachers are being in, putting their contract, it's been approved and ratified and that. So, uh, the C B A will come to council for approval on ten one with a red line version of C B A along with the office. And that is what I have for today. Any questions?
Any questions today? You may have to be A or the interest as well, and getting, making sure to have the pass for approval for the good work. Moving on to council reports.
I can go to the, I'm getting a little bit of fish. No, the fun is for, for us, of course, that's the other app, um, they're a festival on Saturday. Super fun, you know, pretty, um, over really people in there. And, uh, the music is lovely, so, um, I just, I'm very thankful, like, that they approved a helping on that, to call that. And the other thing I wanted to ask, and your commercial seat is, is not here, but I was wondering if, if I purchased maybe three cars and just sent anything, you know, to, uh, the hardware store, lives at the hardware store and the hardware program at the high school and then even there are those baskets and did such a great job. I think everyone in the city was just thrilled, so I don't know if that's something I could get a part or maybe. I, I don't know.
I think that would be a real, uh, uh, good opportunity.
Sure.
Uh, and I, I suspect that we have to, to be involved. We do, actually, we have a whole, and that got to make you know.
I can have it to do with my work, but it's very.
I can go then to the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, uh, seeing none, we'll move straight into presentations, we have two this evening. First up is capital facilities plan and the Riverview School District, Lisa Robertson.
Hello. Do you want me to share my screen with the presentation or do you guys have the screen to share on your end?
Um, you can go for it so that you can move it up to your vision.
Okay. Give me a second here. I might just, if, well, let's see. Let me give it a whirl and see if you guys can see it. Um, I'm just on my laptop, so I don't have my same.
We can see it.
Okay, can you see that in like presentation mode? Is it advancing? Okay, perfect. All right, so I'm Misha Robertson, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations at the Riverview School District. Um, and then this is our Riverview Capital Facilities Plan. Um, it's really intended to provide the City of Carnation and City of Duval, as well as King County and other jurisdictions and our own community with a description of the facility needs to accommodate the projected student enrollment, um, at the acceptable levels of service over the next six years. So our district currently spans over approximately two hundred and fifty square miles through Carnation and Duval and in unincorporated King County and serving just about three thousand students across six different schools, um, in the valley. This slide shows the projected enrollment over the next six years. The district hired a demographer, um, from Flow Analytics to assess with enrollment forecasting. This year's plan anticipates a slight decline in student enrollment. Some of the trends are resulting from transfers to private schools or other programs such as Running Start. Um, declining kindergarten enrollments based on some lower birth rates that we're seeing and then overall lower student generation rates regardless of the local growth that we're seeing in housing developments. Uh, let's see, school facilities, um, and student capacity needs are dictated by the types and amounts of space required to accommodate our distant different district adopted educational programs. Um, under the Growth Management Act, public entities are required to inventory existing capital facilities. The purpose of this facility's inventory is to establish a baseline for determining what facilities will be required to accommodate student enrollment in the future. So these graphics are just outlining the different permanent capacity space versus, um, student headcount and building. Versus, um, student headcount and building area for each of our schools. Um, you can see in the charts that almost all our schools are currently over permanent capacity. And if they're not currently over, they're projected to be over relatively soon or have been in the. Recent past. Um, as you can see, the district also heavily relies on the use of relocatable classrooms, otherwise known as portables without the surplus. Um, capacity within our, uh, relocatables, all of our buildings would be. Way over capacity, so we're relying heavily on those to accommodate. The student enrollment and. The projected increase in the different schools is, um, where we plan to house those students in the coming years. In particular, to Tolt Middle School, the district has permanent capacity needs at all grade levels. Um, but we recently conveyed a capital assets advisory committee to review the district's. Capital needs and to identify some recommendations from the community for future planning. That committee prioritized planning for a rebuild with, um, some expanded capacity at Tolt. And they also recommended, um, in increasing. Um, Tolt Middle School because of where they're at in their growth pattern, um, and expected to be growing over time. So based on that work of our capital asset advisory committee, uh, they went. To the board and made a recommendation, uh, to our school board that we begin looking at options for rebuilding Tolt Middle School. That's probably the largest change you'll see in the plan from last time to this time is that, uh, for the past several years in the last bond. Measure that the district ran, there was an elementary school projected to be built, um, in the plan. That has been replaced as the. Size of our elementary schools are currently. Supporting the amount of students that we have and we've lost a lot of students in elementary and it's slowly regaining but not planning to grow. Over the long term at a very high rate. So therefore, the recommendation after working, um, with that committee was to potentially look at the rebuild of Tolt Middle School. So the district will continue that work this year, putting together, um, more committees to take a deeper dive into, into that work. For those projects. The impact fee is. Heavily driven in the capital facilities plan by the student, uh, factor or the student generation rate, um, student generation rates are. The biggest significant factor determining those impact fees. Generation rates are the average number of students generated by each housing type, single family dwelling or multifamily dwellings. The Growth Management Act authorizes. Districts to collect impact fees to supplement funding for additional facilities needed to accommodate based on the new development. Uh, we've seen that the student generation rates have been significantly declining over time, over the past several. Plans that we've developed, most notably in the multifamily home unit. For the project in this. Plan at the middle school, if we take a look at the middle school age students that we're generating from multifamily. Units, we're really only generating about one student per forty multifamily units in the district. Um, we're continuing to work with Flow Analytics to see if that trend is likely to continue. Throughout the next ten years, um, if there's going to be any shift in that. But at this time, we're just seeing that the generation rates of the new development, new developments are not, um. Increasing and then we've just seen them decreasing over time, and so what we'll, what we'll see in the proposed or the adopted, um. Impact fees from our adopted plan is that. The single family, uh, fees did come down slightly from last year. Um, but the multifamily fees are significantly down because the, the multifamily homes in our area just are not generating the students. Um, that we, that we would typically anticipate to see. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you for the report, very welcome. Um, I'd love to ask why the decision was made to rebuild Tolt when the high school. Accept due the significantly higher.
So when we, when we took a look at the high school, the, there's many different factors that were weighed in, not just. Capacity, so all of the schools are over capacity. When this, when the committee looked at it, they looked at, uh, tier one, tier two and tier three level, um. Issues with the different schools and the actual replacement of Tolt was more efficient in. Upgrades that are needed, safety concerns with the building and then capacity, so on multiple levels. Um, also. It doesn't necessarily rule out that we would not need to add capacity to the high school. But the high school, because their enrollment is actually not increasing, it's been declining over the last several years. It doesn't actually qualify to collect any impact fees, so although. When a bond committee is put together, they may look at different projects at multiple different schools across the district. Um, that's just not one that would calculate into the. Collection of impact fees, and so we wanted to be very careful, what we added in is projects prior to putting together a bond committee.
Some parents, students at the high school to address. That due to the student enrollment breaks the climate where they are where it projected this next school year, this school year now. That their staff at Cedar Press are having to work at Cedar Press and Tolt. Now, is that, do you have any insight into that, is that true or is there something else?
Yeah, the district has seen, um, a pretty. Significant decline in, um, enrollment over the last four to five years post pandemic. And so we have been doing a lot of work to make sure that we are staffing our programs, um. Based on student requests, the only staff member that is being shared between the two schools is the drama teacher, and that is because. The, the program just didn't have enough students that warranted a full-time drama teacher at the high school, we've seen this in years past. Um, dating ten years ago where we've, we've shared choir teachers at times or band teachers at times. Between the two schools, if we don't have enough enrollment in one school to warrant a one point O teacher in that program. Um, it one keeps the employee whole, um, but two offers the programs, um, even though we can't. Keep them on as a full one point O employee, so it's not happening in a lot of cases, uh, we currently have one teacher doing that this year. Uh, we had one teacher several years back doing it for choir, um, and we've done it, um, in a few other programs here and there. But our biggest priority is to try to not cut programs and be able to maintain, um, as many programs as possible for all the kids. We just had to get creative in that.
However, I mean, as we die of portable, uh, a full like theater press, which. Be pretty crowded even at the drop in moment, um, the portable might have classroom space but don't add common spaces or more gym space. When impact fee be used, um, even if they aren't adding classroom space. Because like I said, we added classroom space in portable, which we could use impact fee, but it didn't. Didn't increase those other common areas, like of having lunch in the entryway of, um. Uh, theater practice, sometimes tricky.
So we can look into the options of using impact fees for common spaces, but some of those projects. Are much larger than what the in, impact fee budget could actually. Afford to. Fund on its own, and so, for instance, we had in the last bond, we did have some added capacity to the high school. Um, when we ran that last measure to expand the capacity of the lunchroom. Um, that was one of the areas in addition to a few more classrooms at the high school. And we could use those funds for that, we have ten years to use those funds, and so if and when we pass a bond that would have a major. Modernization to the high school, we could look at using some of the impact fees there, um, as well. Um, but like I said, at this time, we're not able to continue to collect on that school. Because of the fact that they're not growing in enrollment, but for the years we did collect. When they were, um, up to those ten, that ten-year period, we can use some of those funds for that.
End of the presentation?
What's up?
I was asking, that was just.
That was the end of my presentation, yes.
Thank you. Um, does any other, do any other council members have questions? Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Robinson.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, our last item of business this evening is a presentation report on the biennial art plan and the cultural question. Um, this evening, we are pleased to have our chair, our cultural commission, Jen Hernandez here. Uh, to present for the city administrator's.
All right, thank you for your attention, um, going for the presentation to start. In the meantime, I'm going to apologize for a wavering voice, I suffered from a chronic cough and forgot to get my day. Welcome to the city of Duval cultural commission biennial art plan, this is something that we've been working on for the last three months, uh. On top of everything else that we're doing. Um, go ahead and do the next page. But we'll start off with a quick year-to-date update of what we've all been doing. Starting right at the very, very top, with, I mentioned this before, we, the first project that we did was to create the art signage, um. That was something that was just kind of a test run on how we're going to run the council, basically having a point person. And then having the councils form our idea, their ideas to what the point person had created. The second one is the How Far We've Come art installation. Uh, that was when I was talking with you all, it was under, the stuff is now up and running, and if you go up there during sunset, it's absolutely beautiful, because the sun gets right up. And glimmers, on top of that, there was also a ribbon cutting process that. Uh, Courtney Moreno had, uh, set up for us as well. That was a lot of fun and the community yielded to community with very, very. The third one is that we funded the refreshment of the original, we would not expect that to happen this year. This was actually one to be part of our biennial plan for the next two years. When someone named Randy Burke popped up with a plan and a budget and, uh, an entire setup on how we were going to get this done. And in that same meeting, as one of our commissioners, uh, Christian Grande, I said, give the brother money. And gave her the money and they're back up and they're beautiful and better than ever because we now have a background. Uh, next slide, please. These are our upcoming projects. Uh, stuff that we wanted, are working very, very hard to get done before the end of the year. Currently, we're still working on the Cedar Flight Park project, we're trying pretty hard to. Uh, get this done, we do have submissions, we do have people willing to do the work, we are looking to try and. Balance that out as some of our submitters were not able to actually do the work and see if we can get someone else to do that. Uh, the Welcome to Duval mural, we just had the vote on this last week. This is the design that we decided to go with. We're very happy with this, and I'm, I love that welcome home, there's the handprints in that. That is going to be locals, people who work on it, to people who help with it, people who show up. Get their handprint on that, and I'm very, very, very happy with that. And we're working on Birds of the Valley, we just sent a call for artists out, this is going to be student-led. So we're getting specifically the students from, uh, Cedar Press High School. Uh, other schools in the area, I believe. Uh, and we're trying to get submissions to them, this is going to be a student-led project, uh, for the main, uh. Main and. Wouldn't build Duval Road, uh, Duval Market. For Tainan. Uh, that is coming up, we're still looking for submissions on it. Next slide. That leaves us with all the other work that we gotta do, which is the actual biennial plan itself, um. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, in the previous slide, I forgot my action notes, other things that we were planning, I mean, that weren't on there was, um. The maintenance inventory of art, we know we're, we're looking forward to, we're trying to get that done this year back, and it's going to be the next. Uh, see what we have, what was necessary to get that upkeep, get that maintenance on there. Now that is. So we started making the biennial plan, this, uh, our first product, uh, our first item was to try and make visions, missions and goals statements. And again, I tried the point person in a swarm thing, where I actually sat down and I wrote our. A what we call the seed statement. That seed statement was based off of other biennial plans from other towns in the community. Uh, these seed statements were just basic, this is our vision, this is our mission, this is our goal. What ended up happening after that, I basically was hands-off and let the other commissioners add, subtract, redefine. Determine what they had on there so that at the very end we have our vision, mission and goal. Uh, I'll read to you the mission statement because that's the one that explains most of it from us. Uh, of what we're trying to do, and I'll not be too long in reading. Uh, the cultural commission's mission is to maintain, update and inspire the diverse and equitable art of, about and from the residents of Duval. Uh, the mission is also to provide narrative storytelling with a cultural, tribal, agricultural, ecological and economic heritage in Duval. The Snoke Palmie Valley and the surrounding areas, and with these, we hope to enrich the lives of the people of the city of Duval. While encouraging economic, uh, economic development and tourism. What this basically boils down to is an idea that I want people to think of Duval as the worst. I want people to. Think of, where did I see that weird little dragon mural, or where did I see this little, the, the giraffe statue? That's Duval, that has to be Duval, even if you've never been there, I'll say, oh, that obviously doesn't have to be Duval. That is basically our, our stance on this. Um, that actually got us to our final form on these here. Now, we also tried to make future projects, and this was actually a really neat process, we all did the same thing. With the, uh, we didn't assign a point person, we just swung the idea. But before even that, we had open houses, we had an open house here at the visitor center. We had an open house for Duval as a city hall, which was amazingly put together and amazingly informational. Uh, we got a ton of what, what do you want to see in public art around town? Uh, and an image of that would actually enter practice, uh, where you can see that they really, 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 really wanted stuff, including a crime. One, one person was very, very, very big on that. Uh, once we had that list, we held a workshop here at the visitor center in one of the cultural commission meetings where each of. What art projects we want. Uh, some of us had very long lists, I'm sorry about that, some of them had very short lists, uh, but were very, very intricate and detailed, including a, uh. Four-part educational series of, uh, uh, educating. Team based on the scenes, which I thought was really, really amazing, that was, uh, Commissioner. Uh, once we did that, we actually took a vote on. And I voted on the, the different, uh, projects we all have. It was again over to staff and tabulating which ones had the most votes, and then it was also given over for budgeting and for feasibility. Uh, some of the stuff that we liked. It unfortunately cannot be done, some of the stuff that we. I disparage in your mind. It can be done, just. Um, once we had that list, we then did a matrix vote of which ones of these were our most important ones, we want to go ahead and push through. And, uh, on the next, uh, the next slide, you'll see some of this, this is not a comprehensive list of projects that are coming up. It's definitely a, uh. A matter of what we want done, such as, uh, decor, classic color around our retaining walls, uh, some months ago, I sent a friend when never seen snow. A video of me driving through downtown Duval. In the snow, and she was like, I love your talent, but it's very bright. The idea behind this would be to take our retaining walls, which are basically slate brick, brick. And not really put a design on them, not really put a, a, a depiction on them, but just to give them little splashes and color, little patterns of color here and there to brighten it up. Brighten up downtown again. Uh, performances, small dramatic musical performances at depot park, this could be, uh. The Drama Club at Cedar Christ High School coming up and doing a show of, of him, or. Uh, my personal favorite, there's a group that does professional Star Trek shows, as if they are stage players. Out there, they're also smaller. Musical performances, not something like Summer City, but for smaller, smaller bands locally in the area who don't need the power. Okay, it's intimate where people can just walk in. Uh, they can sit on their way on their. And they see, get interested. They walk out if they want to, or just basically sit and stay, something that we're very, very big on. Uh, murals, native plants and Northwest murals on the visitor's stairs. So we're trying to get that taken care of down there as well as possibly. To be a very nice little, a little rest stop for people to walk up to town. Uh, New Year's Festival with depot park, we have a, uh, we have a fire pit. I would very much love to use that to bring New Year to the community. Uh, I think that fosters a really big sense of community that fosters a reindeer in the new year and in a joyous way. And uh, would really bring us. Uh, the rainwater sensors, which I would love to see also around town, uh, particularly at school bus stops. You don't see them until it breaks. Once it breaks, there they are and they're pretty cool. And one of my personal favorites, replacing the flood cage in McCormick Park with a giraffe. If we got along that, we can make it long enough to make the place stay so. Um, I'm, I love it. I absolutely love that. I think that was Commissioner Frager's idea. There are others that we're trying to do as well, such as um. We're trying to do uh. What we call river drafting, which is some kind of plot on the river, basically trying to find a way with the river into our cultural commission as it is a big part of town. And other projects such as ball festival, uh, which we need a little bit more clarification on that, but it's a new idea. And I believe. Pointing the next. Uh, at this point, uh, we are a bunch of visioners, we are a bunch of artists, we're a bunch of scholars, we're a bunch of performers. When it comes to writing legal things, that's enough. You can do very well and at this point, I will hand it over to Administrator Nav who wrote the, the, the actual. Plan itself.
Well, I assume the side of your thought. So, uh, just a couple of slides. Um, to circle back to the public art policy, the, so the public art policy requires that every uh Biennial budget period. The Biennial Plan will be um reviewed and adopted in conjunction with the budget. And as part of the public art policy, the Biennial Art Plan requirements, um, there, there are some requirements that are about. As a planning document for the future, so just wanted to go through some of those. Um, so the, the Biennial Art Plan is in your packet. It's about ten pages long and it covers some of the inspirational stuff, but it more or less follows the outline of the plan requirements. Uh, as directed, so next slide. So the plan requirements um has. Seven main goals. So the first thing that the plan requires is that the. Biennial Art Plan will have the goals of the cultural commission of all. So the commissioner this year identified five key goals. For this next Biennium, select art projects for the city. Um, that means a distribution throughout the city, not just on each street. Uh, prioritize a diversity of discipline in arts and crafts uh throughout. So. The Biennial Art Plan, you'll see an identification that it's not just murals, it's not just cultures. We try to draw from each element of a discipline or craft. And uh, creating the Biennial Art Plans, there was a diversity. Uh, the cultural commission focused on emphasizing being collaborations where possible. Work towards the creation of a creative district. Uh, as a reminder, the city cannot be the applicant. For the creative district, so we need our commission partner with some of our artistic agencies. Um, or uh nonprofits for the creation of a creative district. And then performing an inventory of all the artists along with the maintenance requirements. The next part of the uh Biennial Art Plan that is required is an identification of the projects. And a site selection for each project. So Commissioner Hernandez went through that process. Uh, it was actually a really great activity this year. Uh, we each member of the commission had their own. Post to know that they wrote their project ideas on and then the commission could track dots. And they were able to vote on the different projects and lock them up and they were able to get into our divine. Um, the project that would end up in the Biennial. Costs feasibility, um, all, all the elements that are in the uh Biennial. And for the public art policy on, you know, is this feasible? Is it representative of. Diversity of interests in the primary means of class that are high sky and all. So the city staff refined that list and then the cultural commission voted again on the final list of projects. Uh, the art plan. Uh, requires that the cultural commission look at needs throughout the community. So that element was accomplished um by looking at scanning locations where art is located throughout the city. Completion of existing process, uh, existing projects was identified as need specifically um putting the planks. The old cedar planks up. But also making sure that the projects that were budgeted are completed in uh this year. And then a need that was reflected in the community outreach was that art reflects the natural environment as well as a cultural and historical. Next slide. The cultural commission considered the equitable distribution and equitable access of art throughout the city. So their Biennial Art Plan accomplished that um by projects being this way to be distributed through a variety of locations throughout the city. As well as being of a variety of disciplines to capture the broader community of artists and main organizations. Um, projects were identified that capture diversity of community interest from young people. To those who recreate in the parks, so trying to meet the needs of uh multiple groups in age. And interests throughout the selection of our projects. Uh, maintenance requirements, so the plan where uh the public art policy requires that. The cultural commission and the Biennial Art Plan identifying maintenance requirements, so they might be by three key projects. For maintenance this year. For this Biennium. And then finally, uh, any partners, organizations are identified. As well as potential funding sources and there's a section for each of these in the Biennial. And then from there, in the last slide, is the question. On the Biennial Art Plan, the process. Anything that Commissioner Hernandez and I will.
Yeah, we need to ask the question. I sort of appreciate it. The first time you're, you're came, I mean, I think you were sort of had a curve in terms of. I do promise or I said expectations. Over delivered, I think, you know, in terms of Steve not. He acknowledged around the signage and the surroundings. Um, you know, I love how the group has come together and sort of formed both from a process perspective and I sort of wanted to commend you for. One, stepping into the role, putting some framing and. It sounds like with the swarm processing, some other techniques, it's a very organic uh process and all the city administrators. Been part of that as well, but just sort of they got the work. I think it brings a lot to the city beyond sort of the tangible. Uh, services that, that we drive, uh, that the community really appreciates and. Just to see this next iteration, you know, looking for to the, to the next. Step that they're looking for, uh, again, I want to thank you for the work and the work that the commission's put into to deliver these. You know, tangible, um. Uh, um, I think in terms of. Art installations that have a lot of value and beauty to the community. I super appreciate it. Uh, I'm a big fan of these swamp techniques. I come from a tech background. And one of the reasons. I love the music and we would have people who would have tech questions, but I didn't know the answer. Someone swarmed it. When you swarm, you get a whole bunch of ideas all at once. That was perfect for the cultural commission. We get all those ideas and instead of just choosing one, at this point now we can all swarm the boat. I mean, all swarm.
Yeah, I'd like to quite clear just to share one of the things you mentioned. So you can make that in your vision of us. You've all been there for twenty seating. Open the draft. He's saying, we're always trying to find a business that will help how to keep people here to be. And give revenue to as a city or this, this, and he can spread it to us. I really hope that that vision can be carried out. We need to come with a top budget. We're looking at hopefully we can find a way. If it's not a typical city, I don't know. Artists underrated. Historically on the test, but yes, we all do it so. How can we get that art, bring money, it's always the challenge. Yeah, I really hope that that would be such a great mission for.
One of the things I would very much like to see in Duval is. Uh, a state of artists company. There's one thing that actually, when we had the sixties, the hippies were here and they did a lot of the art that we're known for. And those that stay still do the art of Dan Petrow. For one, uh. A lot of times, a lot of these artists are not moving away. What I want is to give them an outlet here so that they can continue to beautify the city. Give the city that identification of we are an art town and probably even a state. I know that one of the objects we were looking at was off with having an artist residence. Uh, I don't believe that was one that made it through. Basically to keep someone here to keep the art. Because unfortunately, a lot of our artists are starting to pass away. We don't want that art idea to dissolve out and want to give a new generation time to step in and. That is something I'm very big on. So I want this time to be our time.
You guys. And I just have a second question. How does the rainy shadow paint thing work? That was really cool.
That is really good question. I don't know. All we know is that when it rains, the sidewalk gets started and that's why I'm not sure how.
Which is a super cool idea, I like that. Um, so it's a treatment and it's a company actually that started in Seattle. The mayor determined. Presentation at uh the AWZ Congress. Um, that included, it's kind of uh the top of this level is to see small little things you can do. To um. Just beautify your city and bring people to it and just kind of resupply with kinds of. So it's actually, I think it's sensitive and um it's a treatment that's environmental. It does always, one maintenance requirement. That is in the Biennial Art Plan is, I know you mentioned that that would have to be a lot of power here. You'd have to do it again. But the biggest cost for the handling and if you have artists that can do it, if you're willing to do it. So cool, but it was one of the areas for public works. So when we got the list from the cultural commission. Every city department had an opportunity to apply on the list and everybody wrote it. So. You know, mine were really more games like that, like this tax insurance requirement. But. But you know, public works, okay, the staffing element is the doable amount over time. And so we looked at every um project that was identified and I think that list was forty plus. And wrote notes back to the cultural commission, which things we thought were feasible, which were economical, um, which were not economical without a grant. For doing. You know, the, especially the. The support signet event did not yet. Uh, the fourth thing that ends not one that is anticipated in the budget, it's one that would require because the cost of it is. A little prohibitive. And there are red opportunities for because there's ecological education. So that's one where red opportunities are probably. Uh, closer matched to the project, but we did not include it in the budget. Um, because it just. It exceeds, exceeds the. Proposed amount in the country. So all the projects that have been written on the page. So page six and page seven. A list of projects um with. So page six has an identification of projects based on type to represent the diversity of projects. That were selected. And then page seven has those that. Made the list that also were included in the proposed budget. And then at the bottom of page seven, um. We've identified those that are also on the list with goals or ideas. We would need to see for a fun. So. Page seven, uh, blue timeline as the project and the proposed budget. And to answer your question, yes, we did anticipate overtime costs and we priced out, especially the ones associated. And so, yeah, like having to coordinate a poll or a report, that would be using uh. We had to coordinate some of these things who are, you do, I mean. So where staff costs were associated with girl, so it would be believed. Public works needed to facilitate the project, the associated costs to because it was hardly important. Uh, Reagan is not included in that class because she's an exact employee that's not.
Um, yeah, I guess this is one of the best things I've written about, so I probably need to pre-tell you in my reading list, but um. It, it, this is great and I love how. There's different kinds of art, you know, it's not just, it's not all murals or, you know, there's a lot of texture in this document itself. I love, it hits on a lot of different categories. Um, and art is a huge economic uh developmental for us, um, to have that identity as art city, the art town. Um, one thing that really popped out to me. Is the retaining wall pop a color idea? I love that so much because. You know, nobody just is like, hey, you know what would look good here is a retaining wall. So they, they're structural, they need to be there and they need to be there. And so they think of a creative way to um. Outbuild something there to make it more interesting visually as we drive through. We don't want to be very sweet. Um. So anyways, I just appreciate the um commission's work on this. It's really, it's really great and I'm excited.
Appreciate it. The color pop uh idea actually can. Sometimes I refer to uh other things that I used to live in, uh, the city that I was born in, San Antonio. Uh, they did a massive, massive update of their freeway system throughout the eighties and nineties, but one of the things they did was they assigned a color. To each freeway that they used to paint highlights, they used to paint stuff. And it just brought an extra little pop to see this, this warning as a freeway flag. And I figured, well, you know, what'll be in the top block now? That same kind of mindset of what should happen here and there. It's also very, very cheap. It doesn't have to have a design for it. It's basically just like. Let's just take a couple of blocks here and paint it. Play peach. This one will be uh first, yeah, this will be blue, but it just gives that little extra color that's using widgets.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate all the work that you put into this. It's really good.
I just want to say, uh, discrimination is so clearly real, you're. The cultural commission, uh, makes you, but when cities. Even the main law for pointing. All of this work, this was what really provisioned. Even when we did our cultural commission is getting this diversity, this, this new idea that. People at the table that are willing to begin and do the work. Um, and think of the entire community and the work that we're doing in, in the process, thinking of what. Um, goes into these annual plans, the Biennial plans and. The projects that'll come with it. So thank you so much uh to you and the entire cultural commission for. The dedication and the work that's gone into this and uh. What a difference this commission has made in just a very year. Uh, it really is pretty incredible to see. Uh, some major projects from the version so quickly. It was such positivity to be in the, in the secret community in the first. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to, to respond often by saying that I really appreciate coordinating my administrative tasks, that you fit. We are very new to this. Uh, I made a joke at the last meeting where, you know, we don't know what we're doing, so we're doing it quickly. We know what we're doing because of them and aiming forward to that. There's still some bumps in the road, but with their metrics, we move forward and. Leap some bounds and it is very, very much appreciated.
I was super thrilled to read it, I would. Book bench and updating the art blog, which is, you know, linking back to our development. You know, if someone comes to our town and wants to learn about where all of our art. That already is one that we pick up to date and so I was just, I didn't see that, um. So I sent an email, I sent a picture, I opened it, I opened the email, I can't hold. A photo, send it to you, maybe you can show. Um but if it's in there. So I attended the art. It's short, it's the event and they have some performers um in the brand. And the backdrop, there's white at the. You under the bridge and I know we got way more of this. Bringing another one in there, probably make you crazy, but um it just occurred to me that that might be kind of a fun thought. Farmers market, it kind of. City, the parking lot, hey, that's a good spot. But anyway, I don't know if you uh, do you recognize?
Oh yeah.
But um anyway, I just wanted to put that out, that whole idea of pop of color or just to kind of cheer up places. Um you know, even a spot like that, just. Um yeah, there's a lot of graffiti all under there, I don't know if we have all, if we have managed to leave you, but um. Um we do have an organization that is interested in community service that has uh. Offer to paint with graffiti. So uh we're just working, it's good to.
And uh one more thing, one of the ideas we didn't have on records for. Would literally be, like instead of just tagging the name on there, other places where you don't actually paint, much like the one that we have in athletes, they rock hard. Much like that, where my attitude on that is, if they want to draw something, let's give them the space to draw, but let's give them the space to actually beautify. Not just tag a name or process. Uh that was one of the ideas. Possibly in the future.
Just a thought, thinking that it's a high traffic area that's gonna see a lot of graffiti and could be a good place for graffiti wall. Um you know, every year there's a new senior class and maybe it's finding some spray paint and let it be senior wall, I think it all. Put their mark on it and then every year it changes again, so.
Well, thank you all, and what a positive way we need and uh participating this evening, uh normally these presentations are up front, I'm really thankful that it was. At the end of our meeting, thank you for speaking around this long. Uh but we do not have any further business, so our objections, we are adjourned.